And we're going to hear from...
What?
Chief Hale.
Chief Hale.
The Chief.
All right, good afternoon, everybody. Hope that's right after lunch, so I'll try not to bore you too much. Just asking for money. That's it.
That is downstream.
Just asking, you know, if I stand there on the corner at the LBJ, can I...
Yeah, police officer, please help.
All right. Yeah, just to start off, to reiterate, y'all heard everything that Steve has said about the population growth. We're experiencing the same issue with increased call volumes, and I've got a slide in here that'll address that. The other thing that I think is important in the discussion about density is that, you know, our, the new apartment complexes that are being built are very nice, and so there's not an issue of income associated with people living in apartments. Some people think that. That is not the case, especially with the ones that are building in Farmer's Branch. So it has nothing to do with money, but it has a lot to do with density. We're having a lot of calls for service out on the west end because of the density. So, just to kind of put it in perspective, you know, when a thief goes shopping, and it's not necessarily the people, you know, if you build it, they will come, well, that's true of the thieves as well. You know, if you're going to go shopping, you might as well go shopping in a place where you've got a lot of choices. Apartment complexes are places where you have a lot of choices. You have a lot of vehicles to choose from, you have a lot of apartment, you know, a lot of units all piled up into one spot, and they're a little more transient, so people don't always recognize who belongs and who does not, like in your, in a single-family neighborhood. And so we're starting to see those issues even with burglaries and apartments out on the, off of Luna. And so that's taking a little bit more time, you know, from our officers. We don't just come out and take reports. Our officers have their crime scene kits with them, and they do us for prints, they do all the things that they're supposed to do to try to help solve the criminal offense. And that takes a little bit of time. So with that, one of the big things that our citizens talk about, even in our citizen survey, is how quickly police and fire are able to get to the scene of whatever issue it is that they're having. We're struggling with our response times at 278 should be 240, which is, be four minutes, 240 seconds. So this trend has been going, we haven't been in the green for well over six months. So, not hugely way out of whack, but it's an indicator that it's just taking us more time because our officers are tied up and they're having to clear and go to another call. They can't just say, "I'm sorry, business is over." If they're not done, they've got to finish their business, and if it's not, you know, an absolute emergency, then they're just having to, it's just taking us a little bit more time to get to our calls. So, again, we're struggling a little bit at keeping at the goal of 240 seconds, which is four minutes. Some of that is also related to traffic. On our typical responses, we're not supposed to be speeding unless we have our lights and sirens on, but by policy, if it's not an in-progress where somebody's life is in danger, we just don't, we're not, we're not supposed to be doing that. And so telling them to drive faster is not an option, because we have to obey the traffic laws just like everybody else does, unless we have our emergency equipment on, and our policy regulates when we can turn on our lights and sirens. Because it causes a lot of, as Steve will tell you, people vaporlock whenever there's sirens and lights. They vaporlock. They don't do what they're supposed to do. So, that's, that's another deal. And also, in the, in the study we had done back in 2017, one of the challenges with our city as well is it's long and skinny. It's the worst type of response. You know, if you could draw, you know, a city, you wouldn't want it to be that way for response purposes, because whenever you're traveling from one end, from Midway Road, all the way out to Royal Lane, that's a pretty long haul for us. And so in traffic, that causes us a little bit of issues. Kind of our long, skinny city makes response times a little bit more difficult for us. One of the things with Kevin's new shop is he's going to, he's going to give us a space out there so our officers will have a place to come to. And out on the west end of town, it's not a substation per se, but it's going to be a place where we can, the officer will have to come all the way back to the station to have access to the network or computers that can actually come in there. And so we appreciate you doing that for us, and I think that's going to help us a little bit, keeping the, keeping that officer out there on the west end where they should be. Any questions on the response time? All right. Calls for service are steadily increasing. You can see, since June of '18, we're, we, it's kind of odd, there's, it's kind of an oddity that we went down to the border, usually that, that doesn't do that. It's really hard, it's really hard to predict when criminals are going to behave the way they are, but we always usually start going back up in December because of the non-traditional shoppers stealing things out of people's cars. And then the summertime always gets a little bit busier for us as well, because the kids are out of school. And it'll, it'll trend back down a little bit, but overall, our calls for service are steadily increasing due to the increased population that we're serving. In June, it was, the actual was 1,836. The other thing is that this does not, this does not include our self-initiated traffic stops. So, that is not, that's not part of this number. So their, the self-initiated stuff that they do, whether it's the DWBI, that is not included in these numbers. These are just actual calls for service that we, the citizens call. Any questions on the calls for service? All right. So, the ask from police department, from the police department this year is to add two additional officers. If you recall, we created Beat Seven back last year, or it's, it's actually a new police Beat One, it's our seventh beat, because we had six total, now we have one. And because we knew we wanted to add a, a new beat to the west end, we reconfigured all of them, and I have a, I have a slide on my computer if anybody's interested in seeing that. But we reconfigured all of our, all of our beats and redrew some lines to, based on call volume for that specific area. So one officer's not having to work a lot harder than anybody else. We tried to break up the beats so that, so that reasonably speaking, that the, the call volume for that particular officer is roughly the same. And so that, that benefits, benefits us also because whenever you need a backup officer, they're not more likely to be tied up, you know, as compared to any other officer in the city. And so the closest buddy beat, which is the beat next to them, is able to get to them more quickly because they're not tied up. So the recurring calls for new, two new police officers is 126,000. We're looking to add one more police vehicle for that, for that new beat. The GF is for general fund, that's $49,050. Also want to add another police vehicle for traffic, because we're starting to experience some issues with just increased traffic volume, and I know that y'all have been kept in the loop on some of the racing issues that we're having out on the west end of town. And so, want to use red light funds, not general, general fund, where no more money's going into that account, but we've got roughly about $892,000 in fund balance in that account. And because it's for traffic, I can, because I'm going to utilize it for the purpose of traffic, I can spend money out of that account to buy another vehicle. And to add, now, I'm not adding an officer for this position, I'm just going to reallocate a person from one of the beats to work, to do it, become a traffic officer. Doesn't mean that they can't answer calls for service as well, that their primary duty is to work traffic, just like everybody's seen Rory out in the bout town, stopping the trucks, that's his primary duty. But when we need him, he's, he's a police officer, so he gets to make backup calls, and he'll, he'll do calls for service as well. This is the new, this is new Beat One. As you'll see, it's split by Luna Road, goes to our city limits, to the north, and also to the west, and then goes all the way out to Royal. And this is solid apartments, and then of course you've got a segment of the single-family homes here as well, and I believe these corners up here are slated for some hotels, is that correct? And so that will be its own beat. What it used to look like was is anything west of 35 was, was beaten. So it encompassed everything on that side. Now we've split it, and so Beat Two actually encompasses part of the west side, on the side, on the west side of 35. And again, that's based on projections for call volume, based on the number of houses and the, and the density that we have out there. It's, we ran some, ran some programs, Catherine does a really good job of data mining for us, and, and so, some of it's got a little bit of guesswork, but it's based on statistics from other cities, based on density of population, about how many calls we're going to get, and that's what we use to draw these lines. Another large item, and this is also red light money and not general fund, one of the issues that we've run across just over the years, technology is changing on us so quickly. We've, our, all of our camera systems that we utilize in the PDE are different, and it's just, it's just how it came out, the cheapest bid. Our car, our car, our in-car cameras are L3, Mobile Vision, who's actually just been bought by Motorola. Our body cameras are ViView, who's actually been bought out by Axon, and they're pushing them out of business, because that's what these companies are doing, they're cannibalizing. The bigger companies are going in, buying out the smaller ones and saying, we're not, they basically put them out of business. And so, our cameras that we're wearing right now, that company is, no longer exists. And so, because it's been bought out by Axon. And then we use Milestone in our interview rooms, because all of our interviews have to be video recorded, along with our intoxicilizer room as well, that also has to be recorded. So it's, it's cumbersome for us to be able to, you know, use all three of these different systems, because they all have different software. And what a lot of people don't realize is that, especially with, some of you that's heard of the Michael Morton Act and all of that, anytime an officer just shows up, they have, their body camera by policy has to be on. Even if they don't do anything, they don't interview anyone, they just show up just as as help, that video has to go to the district attorney if a case is filed. They don't care that it doesn't have anything of value on it. Because they're required under the law to have all of that information, or we can end up losing the case. And so we have to get all of that uploaded into this, a system that Dallas County has, and ship it to them, along with our, along with our case file.
Quick question there.
Yes, sir.
Aren't they all being recorded on S and P cards, or all those cameras? Are they being recorded on something else?
Well, ultimately, they're, they're recorded, they're recorded to the device, but as soon as we get back to the station, it goes through, goes through a wireless, and it goes into, we have about seven terabytes of storage.
Okay.
And it ultimately ends up in there.
It's all the same video format?
It's all the same video format.
Got it.
It is. So what we're wanting to do is, is to basically go through and replace all of our systems. It's pretty easy to justify on the, on the body camera, because they, they're out, they're gone out of business. They still exist, but their service has gotten horrible, and it's, it's just a matter of, matter of time before they're absolutely gone. The L3 camera systems in the cars are not that old, they're about three years, about three years old. But again, I want, I just want to take this opportunity, because we do have this red light money available to us, to take and use the entire, use a big chunk of money, about $400,000, and go with one system. And there's some, some really good benefits to it. Dallas County, the two that we're looking at, they actually, were able to actually share our videos, we don't have to upload them, we actually just give them their own link, and we move the videos, and they can go get them out of there. So there's no having to wait to upload and spend, have the detectives have to sit there and watch to make sure that it goes through. They will actually have their own login to go to the software and grab it themselves. We just have to make it available to them. Also, there's technology, especially with the body cameras too, that's, it changes just like everything else, there's some really great technology. Both of the systems that we're, we're looking at potentially going with, as soon as you draw your, draw your weapon, it has a sensor that is put inside your holster, automatically comes on. Don't have to forget, you know, the officers sometimes forget to reach up and swipe their camera. With this, if the gun comes out of the holster, it automatically comes on. With their sensors, where when you open your door, it automatically comes on when you get out and run, if you have to get out and chase after somebody, there's several options. We can also put it in our taser, so if we take out our taser, it automatically comes on. So there's some really neat, new technology out there that I think will be really beneficial to us in the environment that we're operating in. Everybody expects camera footage, and when you don't have it, the public thinks that you're hiding something. Even if it was just a simple mistake of just forgetting to turn it on, that's not what the public believes. They think we're intentionally not doing it. So, again, roughly about $400,000, and that is not general fund money, that would be red light camera money as well. Because we kind of need to spend that money down before the state figures out how to get it back.
That's right.
I mean, that's just... And that is my presentation.
How much of that phone's going to be left over?
Give me a second.
371.
Want four twenty-five?
Still not, but it's blacked out yet. What's that, the blackout? Terry wants me to bow over to that side.
Say that louder, would you say, Terry?
It's a traffic issue.
How are the, are the license plate reader cameras working?
We're doing the training on them, actually, next week, they are up and running, but they, the officers don't have access to the streaming data yet, because we've got to go through the training, and that's actually occurring next week. But it is, they are up and capturing data.
What else would you want to do with the rest of the red light camera funds?
Um, you know, the, the great thing about it is, is that, you know, with the increased traffic, I can use it to buy more radar trailers, we just had one taken out by somebody that ran all the, just had an accident and took it out, but we've got insurance money back, and so we're replacing that one. But with the increased volume of traffic out on the west end, it wouldn't hurt for us to go ahead and get another one. You know, a sign board that says, "Hey, this is your speed," we can use it for that kind of stuff. I know that Luna Road's going to become a challenge because of, just, it's going to have a whole lot more volume on it. There's going to be a light that goes in, it's going to kind of break that up a little bit, so that'll be helpful, but we're already getting speeding complaints out there from the residents who live out there. So, anything that, anything that is traffic related, I can also share it with Mark, if we need to do an intersection improvement, add, if we need to add Opticom to, to a light signal, or upgrade the traffic box, I've given the, Mark and his, his folks, I think the latest one we did was at the entrance to Burke Haven College, and that was red light money we used to do that. So, there, as long as it has to do with traffic, either improvements or enforcement, we can, you can spend it on anything. I've used it to buy all new radars, used it to buy ticket riders, new, upgrade our ticket riders, we got brand new ticket rider last year with that money. And there's some maintenance that goes along with that, the paper we use to print out, the citations, we, we've used that money for that as well. So I don't have it really earmarked for anything, it's just, it's a nice, it's a nice tool to have just for traffic related issues.
Is the red light money considered general fund money?
No. It's restricted money to carry on specific purposes.
So, the two officers and one vehicle, is really the only thing that's being added to the general fund?
Officer-wise, and then, and then the car, but we've got some additional expenses that are associated with actually Intact that made my budget go up significantly. Because I, I house the money for Intact, in the police department, and I think...
I covered that in my...
Everybody pays proportionally, other cities are paying the same proportionally.
Based on calls...
It's based on call, we actually don't pay nearly as much as Carrollton does.
Yeah, they pay a little, about half.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because they're, they're, they just have higher use for the, for Intact, and so they have to pay more.
Yeah. Terry. Three times as much as...
Oh, I'm sorry, man.
Yeah. I'm sure you know this, the general fund went up five percent approximately, and then your, I think slightly over seven percent increase.
Now, our step increases are also a part of that as well, the next, next step, and I don't want to jump into Brian's stuff too much.
Brian's going to talk about that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and the, the increase was, overall increase was one of those items that we talked about, and the big components of it, some of which are discussed here, and some of which are coming up in Brian's portion as well, in terms of changes in officer salaries.
Okay. Terry?
You asked me what I mentioned, and I tried to make a suggestion to the chief on more than one occasion, there are a number of departments that have, what'd you call them, blackout?
Yeah, they're muted, they're muted whenever you look at them, you don't really see that it's the police.
It's a black vehicle, it's got shadow graphics on it, instead of having a black and white, like our traditional units, and I suggested that he consider acquiring one of those, because everybody, they're trained to look for the black and white, and they can see them, but for traffic enforcement to possibly use that, I think it would certainly pay for itself in a heartbeat.
Or the, the lights concealed as well?
They are.
So across...
The lights are concealed, yeah. And Carrollton has them, a number of cities have them, I mean, Waco has quite a few of them, but I've just...
State troopers now use a nice brown Ford Focus.
Yeah, and it's just, it's philosophical, some agencies, some agencies do that. Kind of my philosophy is, is I'd rather you see me and slow down than me have to write you a ticket. And that's just, that's just mine.
Cristalian.
Yeah. Oh my gosh, philosophy. Yeah, so you talked about one of the lights that are coming on the west side, where is that located? Is that, is that by any chance on Luna and Whittington? Because that is...
I don't think he's here, but I think that is...
I think it's Martin's wing from the other development.
For the other side, okay, because I'm getting so many complaints about Luna and Whittington, it's pretty bad. Especially with the, especially with the, with the angle. And the other thing, in regards to the red light, I'm sorry?
I think it's Mercer, is it Mercer shooting the light? I know the pedestals are still, are already there, or is it Mercer? Because that's, that's where the, that's where the, that's where it comes down off of Valley Beach.
Mercer.
I thought it's the one that comes through the brickyard, yeah. Yeah, that's Whittington, right?
Yeah, that's Whittington. I'm talking, so coming out of the brickyard, going west, that's Whittington, and then it gets to Luna, and it stops right now, it doesn't continue because the development hasn't gone on yet. Is that right?
I'm going to text you.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Because we have the exact same issue, the exact same current house.
Okay, perfect. And then the other thing was regarding the red light camera fund. Is that something that we have to use right away? Or is that something that we can wait to see what's going to happen on the west side, to see if we're going to need any further...
Yeah, I mean, I don't, like I say, I don't have any earmarked for anything, what's going to be left if this is approved. The, I don't have anything with it being earmarked for, so, but my only concern is that the state's going to figure out a way to, to, you know, with all of the stuff that they've kind of pushed down on municipalities, I don't want them to figure out a way to take it back. Because we were already having to share 50% of it with them. They didn't like it, so they tried to ban them several sessions back. And they said, "We don't like it, but we're not going to ban them, but you got to give us 50% of the money."
Yeah.
And that's like, oh, okay, I see how, I see how this is going.
And we do reporting from a financial perspective, and they are asking questions, like, "What is your balance?" And, you know, different things like that, so they want to know. Now, in, in terms of what the overall spending is or plan for the Photographic Light System Fund is represented on page eight dash 12, and we're planning to, with this type of spending, we're planning to take that, use those funds before somebody, you know, before the state makes a payment. So the fund balance that we have been maintaining for these years will, and we're anticipating taking that by the end of the year down to zero.
John, what was your question?
I said, I think based on the thing about the red light, license plate readers, I thought those were banned, and they were, we weren't going to do that anymore.
No, the legis, it failed.
Oh, it failed?
The legislation failed, so we're, we're still, we just moved, we put it on hold to make sure that we weren't sending good money out the door, and then they turn around and make it illegal. It could come up again in two years, but we went ahead and moved forward with it.
So I guess compels celebrating.
Yes.
The other thing I had, and it's probably not worth discussing here, I just, I throw it out so we can determine, we want a study session on this or another, is based on, you know, the, the two homicides that we've had, officer-involved homicides, are we convinced that procedurally and training-wise and, you know, the proper cameras, I like this thing about, you know, you pull your weapon, the camera comes on, are, do we need to, to this, sit and talk about all the things to make sure that we are where we need to be?
Well, I have to sit down with that.
Yes, and actually...
Nice conversation.
Yeah, so, thank you for sending that. So I actually asked the same question, I sat down with them and talked about, you know, DPD is doing a rollout through a grant with one of our local nonprofits to do implicit bias training across the board, not necessarily just to address this, just in general, more police departments are doing that type of training, implicit bias training, and we talked about that and getting a grant from, from them as well, to do something similar across the board. And it's not just for police, it's something that I think a lot of different departments should be doing, especially if you're doing customer service or any type of service directly with, with one of our community members. So we talked, we definitely talked about that, and we're, I don't know, I'm exploring that on my end, but that, that's exactly what I, people have discussed that with me and constituents and whatnot, so I definitely brought that up as well. But about the training specifically, I don't know about any other avenues, but...
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're, we're doing everything we need to be doing, and that we're not out of line with other, other peer cities, you know? We had these two officer-involved homicides, I know that Ken Johnson's the thing that's got off-duty, but, you know, we've also had two officers attacked, unfortunately, where it survived. And so, you know, I just don't want us to, I want us to do everything we need to do to protect our officers and ensure that procedurally we're, we're compliant.
And one of the...
I was going to cancel it all, the, the chief and the mayor have met specifically about that, and to make sure that, that, you know, the local mayor know that we'd address that. A couple things. It's problematic to have this as a study session item, and it doesn't fit the requirement as an executive session item. And because it's, well, it is a lawsuit, but not necessarily, yeah, it is even against us. So, it, it's just a very difficult situation. But if you want reassurance about, you know, the amount of training our officers receive, and, and a discussion of that, because I too am concerned about, about both incidents, you know, I encourage you to, any council member, to sit down, the chief and myself would love to sit down with council members individually and, and have that discussion.
Okay. And one overarching thing that I, that I want to make sure everybody knows about, and it comes up every three years, we're part of the state recognition program for best practices from the Texas Police Chiefs Association. And so as part of that, we're required to go through our policies constantly to make sure that we are in the best practices. We renew again in 2020, we're already starting, it's a continuous process that lasts, so once you get, once you get recognized as a best practices agency, you have three years, and then you have to renew again. So we're constantly, from the day we get that, we pat each other on the back and say, "Man, that's great," and we continually have to, I've got a lieutenant in our professional standards, that's all he does is internal investigations and policy review. Goes through it constantly to make sure that we are staying up with the best practices, because we won't pass our, our review at the end of that three-year period if we're not keeping up with what we're supposed to be doing. They send in police chiefs from other agencies and retired police chiefs to come in, and they literally go through every one of our policies to make sure that we are covering all of the things we're supposed to. And that, and what is written in them is, is the best practice for the state. So I'm confident that, you know, from a use of force standpoint, all of those things, that we are absolutely compliant and following best practices.
We review training on a regular basis. So the HR staff works with the police staff, we work with T and L.
we work with TML, and work with the other agencies to make sure that we are following those same best practices, so, this is unfortunate that we got to.
Yeah, and as part of this, I mean, you can have stellar policies, and, and still have, people make, you saw, there's still issues of personnel, people are people, and so, the, the other question, the piece to this is, are we hiring the right type of people? And that's a, that's a discussion that I've had with the chief, the mayor's had with the chief, and I can assure you that, you know, the, the bar to be an employee of the city, whether it's a police officer or any other employee, is, is very high, and I know that the rigor for both police and fire is, it's, you have to go through psychologicals, you take lie detector tests, it's, it's not an easy...
It's very hard.
Yeah, we, we just don't take warm bodies, even though in a competitive environment, it'd be real easy to do that, but, but we don't do that, and so, just, again, it's a two-part thing, you want to make sure you're hiring properly, and we've examined that hires, but if you want to have a one-on-one conversation, we can make that happen for any council member, and have a good conversation about it, because it's a, Derek, definitely a valid question.
Our ratio is about one, one hundred. We have, we, we are lucky to get one person out of a hundred. And if anybody wants to see what that looks like, this coming Saturday, the fourteenth, at Parish Episcopal School, not fourteen, the seventeenth, we will be hosting our tests, and I'll be there all day, so if you would like to come out and see that portion of it, I invite you to come. It's going to be hot, that's all day long, we start at six AM, and we'll go to about six PM. We hold two, two separate tests.
How many, how many physicians do we have open?
Four right now. I've got four, I've got four in training, so, there's, there's full-on paper, and then there's functionally full. So I've got four in training, different phases of training, and then I've got four openings, so I'm eight now. Operate, operate, operation.
Requesting here, the two of them being the two-year requests.
No, that would be two more, that would make me sick.
So what's, what's, what's driving the need in people leaving, are retiring, or...
We've had a couple, the folks that we have lost have not, they've either, they've moved out of state because of family, we haven't had anybody jump and go to another Metroplex agency, I had one leave that went, because he's originally from Indiana, wanted to go back home, he's a police officer up there now, but he wanted to go home, it wasn't, he's actually getting paid a lot less.
And we've had some retirements.
And we've had some retirements.
Can we get a list of, I don't need the names of who they are, but just the number of officers that we have, and the number of people that are eligible for retirement within the next five years?
Yeah, I can do that.
That'd be retirement.
Eligible for retirement, they don't have to.
We don't know the TMRs, if they're coming from the city, would you, would you have that as well?
No, I won't have, so I'll have to just base it on what we have, there's, could be some, to Charles' point, there could be a cumulative number, because they are eligible earlier, yeah.
You would know how many are twenty-five-year eligible?
Yeah, but I can, I can fill that in, because when we do the background, we show where they came from.
We can coordinate.
So I, I can fill in the rest of that gap, because I, I can, we've, we've got one now, but it's just for our service, and I think there's ten, that could go just today.
Yeah, that's, I'm just trying to see what we're looking at.
But I have one that, his last day is, is today the fifteenth?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow is his last day, he's, he's leaving law enforcement, he's going to the private sector, but he's a retired Marine, so he's already got one retirement, and he got an opportunity to go back to work, he did contracting work in Iraq, and so he's probably moving to Germany, but he's leaving law enforcement, he's, he's, he said he's done.
Which is probably what we'll have a conversation on my slides.
And he was one of the officers who was at the location this last year, and he said, "I'm done, because I've done combat in Marines, been shot there, he goes, maybe my dice, maybe it's time for me to put a roll on the dice, can't blame him, I mean, he's already retired, he's done eight years with us, so he's vested, so...
So, Chief, you and I had this discussion individually, but is there anything that we, as the city or the city council can do to help from the, towards the mental aspect? Are you needing anything in that regard to help make sure that our officers are healthy mindset?
Yes, we, we discuss, it's one of my, one of my goals that I keep up on the board, and it's always officer resiliency and mental health are big, are one of my big, you know, I jump up and down about it, we've done everything from yoga to have folks come in and speak to us, the great thing is, is it making the things available to them, every time any officer is involved in a critical incident, we immediately, we send them within seventy-two hours to our psychiatrist to do, to do a debrief. And, so, from that perspective, we take, we take care of them, the other thing is, is that we have some great resources that are actually in the city, that help first responders and also veterans, and so, the name's kind of funny, it's called Twenty-Two Killed, and it has to do with the number of veterans that kill themselves, yeah, and so, but they also serve law enforcement, they also serve fire as well, and they will give us six free counseling services, they're over off of Neutron in our city, and they, no questions asked, doesn't hit the insurance, officers often are worried about, what is this going to look like if I ask for mental health services, you know, am I going to get my badge taken away from me and not be able to do this job anymore? We're trying to break those barriers down, to say, "Look, it's okay to have, you know, to, to go, go get help, and no, you're not going to lose your job", so, I think we've done a really good job in our organization of making sure that people are able to avail themselves of those services without getting stigmatized, and we've got some champions who are coming back and actually talking to the other officers, saying, "Look, this helped me tremendously, and no, it's not some voodoo thing, you don't go in, you just get this stuff off of your chest", and you're able to, you know, talk candidly about it, because what we have to be careful about is, is as long as we're going to a licensed psychiatrist or psychologist, anything that we tell them cannot be used against the officer in a trial or be summoned for any other court purpose, because it's, it's under HIPAA at that point. And so, some agencies are using critical incident debriefs with their own people, the problem with that is that once you share it with me and say there's something in there that may be not so good, that person can get subpoenaed and have to testify against you. So, doesn't come up very often, but it's very, it's kind of a little nuance that we have to be really careful about, and that's why we use licensed folks.
Any more questions for the chief? Rob, do you have anything? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tannen, if you can get a traffic light on Whittington and on Mercer, two lights are coming.
Thank you so much.
Thought I would segue in and just give you an example, right now, I'm sitting on my desk, there's a file from DPD on an officer that they would like to hire, and we rejected, and that's a regular thing, because what they do is, they're allowed to ask us why we rejected, you know, what were the scores, that, that kind of thing, but we get that on a regular basis, because our threshold is actually quite high, and so, it has been very difficult, and almost seven years out of the year, to try to get the chief staffed, it's been a difficult process, and so, when he adds those extra two heads, my staff hears, "Oh gosh, we've got more work to do", but we're doing it, and it's, I think it's a compliment to our police force, because we're looking for the right person. I can't explain, of course, the, the two incidents we have with the small city, but I think it's just simply a matter of, like Charles said, people reacting, in the moment that they're reacting, it's a life and death situation, and they're making split-second decisions, and that's kind of what we are, so... I did come to really discuss budget, there's one specific slide that is around the budget, and it is for our increases, specifically the equity or market increases for police and fire, and then to talk about merit, but I did want to kind of get, especially for our new councilperson, and Terry, you've asked questions along these lines before too, but kind of give you an overview of compensation as a whole, and what those things might mean, so, if I bore you, just tell me to move on. Nice to meet you, I'm doing this right, okay, so just some compensation terms, in fact, we just had a public information request.
You both twice, you both changing.
Oh, there we go, sorry, thank you. We had a request from a citizen, they were requesting what Coda is, we didn't know what Coda was, but we figured out what that, she was asking for was COLA. COLA, I keep doing that, all right, I may have to have...
Give it to me.
Yeah, not, not letting touch it. One more time, one more, maybe. COLA is a cost of living increase, and COLAs are typically based on the CPI, we don't have that, so we are not touched.
Okay.
Oh, it must be on, it must be on timing or something. It's there, and see, it just ranges. I'll just keep going back, don't worry.
We're going to talk off these guys.
Talk across the board.
It's in the slide chest of it.
Can you pause it?
Yeah, it's in the slideshow, or is it?
Uh-oh.
Yeah, it's on, setting on there. Is it setting appearance? Let Ben do his magic.
Stop, it stopped.
Okay.
It stopped?
Hang on, back here, not touching it, stay, not staying.
They had it on auto on the remote.
Can you make it stop?
Please stand by.
I didn't see it moving, yeah.
It must be on the first slide.
Go to Slide Master, turn it off.
Good save.
We got it.
Stop the show, and then start it again.
Across-the-board increases apply to job categories, so one, one type of cross-the-board increase would be what I'm going to be recommending for both police and fire, those are across the board. Merit-based, that's, that's pretty finite, it's our merit for performance. Market adjustment, we look at the market twice a year, we do that every year, specifically for police and fire, we also do that for our benchmark jobs, so we would be doing that for IS, for finance, for some HR, for jobs that you could find anywhere on the marketplace, whether it's in another city, or it's out in the private sector. And then retention pay, that is a pay treatment when somebody hits the top of their range, that they're eligible to receive a one-time lump sum increase, usually it's a thousand dollars, and it's basically a thank you for your service and for your performance, but they can't go up higher in their range at that point. Is it gone?
It won't go to the next one now.
Nobody else had problems, Brian.
I tell you.
Ben, you're up.
I need the...
Ben, you're up.
The little...
Tricycles in my trainer, I'm sorry.
This one's right at the top, I think we shut it, sorry about that.
Yeah, that's right.
I'll see if you, okay?
So you're just doing it itself?
No, I'm, I did it, I was checking to see if this was...
I think it was connected, I was supposed to...
Maybe you're back to your normal business, okay.
Merit pay line, merit pay line. Okay. Maybe let's just... Yeah, that's... Yeah, that's just...
Oh, you have your can do?
Just show that, basic pattern.
I have a PDF, you want to show the PDF?
Well, let's go to the one that's, go to the very bottom.
Sorry.
There you are.
Yeah. We'll try it this way. All right, so, something specific that, that you've asked, Councilman, is, how does it, how does it work on a merit structure versus a step structure, so that's kind of what I wanted to walk you through. Structure adjustments do not have an immediate impact on employees, so when it's a merit process, and I have a picture, I'll show you, but I'm a merited employee, most of the folks in here are merited employees, our structure, we may recommend that the market is moved to percent and a half, and we base that from our compensation surveys that we give back from other cities, and we figure out what the, what the whole structures have moved themselves, that doesn't mean that the individual employee moves, so their individual pay doesn't necessarily move in, in that structure, but the range has now expanded, so their top end would go up, and the minimum would go up, the only time they would have an increase then, is if they were below the minimum of the pay range, because we can't have legally have somebody below that minimum of the pay range, okay? And a step pay line, however, that's different, when I make an adjustment, and so the recommendation that I'm making for, to city manager for fire is a four percent step adjustment based on market, and for police, a four and a half, that means that the employees themselves, because it's a step, they will go from point A to point B, they will actually get an increase, so in the step process, there is a, an immediate financial impact, where that is not the case for merit, and that's, those are the key differences for that.
Ryan, can you go back?
Yes.
And talk, let's just talk about merit for just a second.
Sure.
Let's just say we, we have a job assignment, I'm just going to use the general term, clerk.
Clerk.
Okay? And we pay the clerk fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, so we'll pay clerk, but okay.
I'm just using, I've had, so we decide we're going to pay fifty thousand dollars, that's what that job function is worth to us.
Okay.
There are other cities that pay the clerk fifty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Up to eighty thousand dollars.
Sure.
Okay? But we've determined that that is only worth this amount of money to us.
Okay.
So, you said we're legally required to...
Pay at least at the minimum of the pay range.
At least the minimum of the pay range, so are we looking at fifty-five for what everybody else does?
Sure.
And we're going to have to move that fifty to fifty-five?
Sure, so, so let me, let me, let me show you, tell you what, what that would actually mean, on a merit cycle, or on a merit pay line, and I've got a picture of it, it's on the other slide, Dick, that's not working right now, but I'll, I'll bring you that. But essentially, what that does is, let, let's use the clerk, and we say that we value the clerk at fifty thousand dollars, but what we're, what our comp data is going to tell us is that the other cities are paying forty-eight, fifty-five, fifty-eight, and then they have a range, so, in that comp survey, what we define is the job, and we say what the basic skills and duties are, requirements of that, what the knowledge, skills, and abilities are for that, for that role, when we send it out to the other cities, they have to reply in like, and they tell us, based on your definition of the clerk, you match eighty percent of our job, you match ninety percent of our job, you match a hundred percent of our job, okay? Then we take their data, which is exactly what you're going to see with the police, because we do the same thing, we take their data and we create a pay range, which then says that that fifty thousand probably moves to a midpoint of the range, not a, not a minimum or a maximum, but a midpoint of the range to reflect the market, that would be the average incumbent data from all the other cities, so if you're clerk example, you would have taken fifty, fifty-five, sixty, you'd have averaged those together roughly, and then you would say that that midpoint is now that average, and then you spread your range around that, meaning that your target's not any longer fifty-two, let's say that that came to fifty-two, it's actually forty-seven, so your minimum's forty-seven, the fully competent, fully employed person that matches the market is fifty-two, and then I have an upward range of sixty-two, making that up, all right? So they could be anywhere in that range on a merit cycle, so what we would hire them to is, we'd be looking at that midpoint, because we want the competent person, but we may bring somebody in at forty-seven, but we can't bring them in at forty-five, because it's below our range, we would now be, have an EOC charge, and we'd be again, breaking the law, but as long as they're within that forty-seven to sixty-two, they're well compensated.
So in order to get around breaking the law, can you alter the job description to create something that matches that forty-seven?
Well, no, because what we, well, two, two parts to that answer, the direct answer is yes, you could do that, the problem is, is we know what we want in the job, we know what we need to have to have that job be successful for the citizens of a farmer's branch, so to have that successful employee, I have a particular skill set and a particular job description that they need to hit, so I don't want to... So I don't want to, for lack of a better term, manipulate that to get a lesser employee than... Or somebody, like I tell folks all the time, you may have a PhD, and you may be a brain surgeon. I may be a brain surgeon. But Charles doesn't pay me to be a brain surgeon. Charles pays me to be the head of human resources. So, you know, my value may be $3 million, but he doesn't pay me $3 million, because my job is human resources. And that's the same kind of... So we try not to bastardize, for lack of a better term, the job description. We look at the data and collect the data, and then we average that out and then create a pay range around that. We want to make sure that we are... And your philosophy as council, we all adopted a while back, the 5% above median, 5% above market, and that's where we continue to move that midpoint up.
So that 52 plus 5%?
Exactly. Well, actually, we would set that. That's right. Then our range, our actual range, would then be 52 plus 5. I'm making rough numbers in my head. I say that's 57. But what I want to get across to the council is that doesn't mean that an individual makes the 57. They still could be making 48. They still could be making 62. They're in that range is the point for merit information. That make sense? Did I answer your question, Derek?
I think so.
Okay. And I did that? So here's the real course of the push, the information to Charles and for police and fire. And I also wanted to stipulate and show you how that works with what the two gentlemen before me articulated, as well as merit. It kind of give you a comparison. What this shows is the bottom number here in white is the number of employees in those particular areas. So let's talk about police for a second. Their market adjustment that I'm recommending at 4.5%, which actually does hit their steps. Remember, they're different. It hits their steps. That's a $258,000 bogey. On top of that, they would get their normal step increase, which is what Chief Hill already noted. That's $50,000. Those are combined, because they were going to... If we did nothing today, and they've been here, making this up, they've been here seven years. When they hit the eighth-year mark, they're going to move. And that's that $50,000. Okay, so they were going to get that regardless, based on our current structure. So you have to add those two together. And then the $70,000, the chiefs and I met with Charles, and we looked at how do we best utilize Chief Hale's workforce? And I think from the last session, last time we were here, we were talking about how he could... Should he pay detectives differently? I don't know if you remember that conversation, but that kind of thing. And separately, because I was on a different day, we answered the same, thank goodness. But we answered the same and said, no, we need to have the ability for the leader of that organization to be able to allocate their resources as needed. When we came back, when we stepped back from that, we realized one of the things that we're struggling with is particular shifts and getting people to work those shifts. Well, it's a common thing to have shift differential. So I did some market analysis on that. I brought a recommendation back to the chief, and we agreed. And that allocation cost to have a shift for his group would be an additional $70,000. So when you combine all that, police target for the request is $378,000. Likewise, for fire, their market adjustment at 4%, they're a little bit larger population, but it's a lesser percentage, so that's 251,000. And then somebody may ask, if you're looking at the chart, well, how come their step increase is greater than the step increase of our police officers? The reason is, is we have a group of police officers, a large amount of police officers that are at the top end of their steps. So their step increase is less, because they're hitting that top level. And that was by design. They participated in a comp survey with us three years ago. We have two more years to go before the next one, 2021, we will be doing it. And they pushed in that how quickly we can get to the top, and so that's by design. And then I wanted to note that at a 3% budget, not necessarily allocation, but a 3% budget, 279 people, which is the rest of the staff, spend $385,000. So kind of to your point, Mike, when you were talking to the chief earlier about that 618 number, that doesn't include compounding of increases, so you're absolutely correct. Over time, that will increase, because the market's going to adjust up, so that's right.
Hey, Brian, before you leave that slide, can you mention there's one policy change that we're responding... We're responding to a question that came up last year. And it's a policy, the changes we're recommending. It has no dollar amount in it, but just want to note it. Can you talk about the retention pay?
Oh, yeah.
Paula? No, I'm sorry, not the retention.
Well, it is.
It is the retention.
Yeah. So what we wanted to also say, because being fiscally frugal, we recognize that you shouldn't be able to double dip. So as the two chiefs and I sat down, and then we presented to Charles, we noted that if there is a market study done, which we do it, like I said, twice a year for police and fire, if there is no increase needed, allocated, and people are at the top end of their step increases, then they would be eligible for retention pay, just like the rest of staff. However, if there is a market adjustment, there is no need for that adjustment, because they've been recognized with that market-based pay. So in the years that you all as council approve any equity adjustments, market equity adjustments, there will not be a retention pay for police and fire.
So, you know, going forward and looking at this, right? The amount of the increases here with the new HB2 going forward, you know, these are... Police and fire are all 7% increases. They're almost 50% of our budget.
Correct.
You know, if they maintain 7% increases, there'll be no money left for anybody else or anything.
Right.
You know, moving forward.
Yeah.
In medium with the other city managers, we all recognize that this is not sustainable.
Right.
And the Plano's and the Frisco's, which the next slide will show, the Plano's and the Frisco's and McKinney's of the world, which are driving this race to a bitter end.
Yeah.
Is that we all recognize it's not sustainable, and SB2 will...
Absolutely. What's interesting about it, Mike, is coming from the private sector, we want able... You can't legally share the data that we as municipalities can and actually are expected to, or actually required to. Very different from my past life, where we had to solicit a Mercer or Towers parent and have 500 companies in there buy, you know, classification and that kind of thing. And then you tried to figure out non-derelict goods, man, whatever it was, right, that you were trying to look at. So we all know that as we move up, that's a chase that we need to be addressing, especially with the new legislation to pass. And we're mindful of it. The... What I will tell you is, when I did this data, this data here that I walked you through, on average, the other cities that we compete against went up 7%. They went up 7%, not as a whole. And what they were doing is they're trying to catch up...
To us.
To us. And the leaders of the pack, to Charles's commentary, have been thus far, Plano and Frisco and McKinney. But if you notice now, we're even... We're now surpassing Frisco. Plano's still a huge outlier. Lewisville took a big jump, and they're now ahead of us. So we're not asking to always lead the pack. We're trying to do that 5% above the median, knowing that we're not going to be the market leader, but we don't want to be behind the curve either.
Brian, these are October 1, 2019, sorry, for the other cities.
Correct.
So this doesn't reflect what they may do October 1?
That... Yeah, I don't have that data. And that's why I do it twice a year, folks, is I have to look at that multiple times, because what they tell us they're going to do, they may not do. They may do more than that, but they may do less than that. And so that's why I try to stay ahead of that curve for them. But you're absolutely correct. At some point, we have to... And the marketplace will do that. Will start to just say no.
Well, you know, and again, you know, not getting into the discussion about officers recapping and all of that. You know, but at some point in time, do you see us moving to a model that says, you know, I didn't do the math this year, but I think the number's about 46% of police and fire.
That's roughly right, yeah.
Total budget. You know, and it probably increased a little bit this year, a half a point, or maybe even a full point, based on these changes here. But do you see at some point in time, just saying, you know, police is going to be 25% of our budget, and we're just going to have to work within that? And at some point in time, it becomes, well, you can't raise your salary. You know, or you can't add employees.
Right.
Right? It's squeezing that.
It is.
You know, if our model is wrong, which we're saying it is wrong, we need to change it. You know, should we be looking at a model, you know, sometimes say that, you know, within the structure, police and fire can only be X percent, and economic development is X percent, and start structuring it like that? Obviously, you have the ability to change, but have that be your target.
Right.
Well, we had the discussion to some extent, where we're talking about parks and the robotics and the senior center and whatnot. So, you know, that may not be the discussion to have today, but we should probably have that again to have to determine, you know, okay, starting in next year, we think that this is the model that we should follow.
My only concern is, the direct answer is absolute, we should always be looking at these mechanisms and how we monitor and how we compensate employees. And there's... I always use the kind of the example of, you can go out to Monster or Indeed, and you can look at a job description for an HR manager. So Wendy, some of you know Wendy. Wendy works for me. And you can see that same job description. And on Indeed, it'll say that she makes $50,000, or that job makes $50,000, and you'll see that same advertisement at 120. They're clearly not doing the same thing. And so my commentary around that is, I prefer to... As a true comp person, that's actually my formal background. I have 24 years of designing this stuff. And I would rather see the market drive that. And as the market... So there may be a point, to your point, Mike, that Chief Hill comes, and he's 27% of the budget that one year. And we have to figure out how to work within those confines. But that was the... But the market tends to level out. The competition tends to, over time, get set. What you don't want to do is start just arbitrarily adding increases that aren't needed. You don't want to add stuff that is not a good return on investment for the citizens. And so that would be my only... You know, just because somebody's 25% of the city, they may actually make up a higher... Take, for example, professionals. A professional, a white-collar organization tends to make more than a blue-collar organization on the marketplace as a whole. Now, that's changing over time, but as a whole, that's the case. Well, you don't want to just artificially say, because your company has 25% white collar, that's all they can grow. So that would be my caution.
Yeah, but the reality is, if you're over-invested in one segment of employees, you're under-invested somewhere else.
It's one cookie. So you got to pull one pie. You got to pull from the one pie.
And Councilman Bob Merritt, remember, we have defined the market. The council by policy has defined the market. So you could say, is it time to reexamine the market? Are... Is Plano, Frisco, McKinney, are those truly our benchmark city market?
Yeah.
Are they two different, different dynamics of those organizations? Are they so different that they really aren't our market from a policy perspective? Should we no longer include them in the benchmark city on salary? Or should we look at throwing out the high, throwing out the low? And then... So there's different ways of looking at that, depending on what the policy direction of the council is. But I want to throw that out, that those are other options as well to think about.
Yeah, and you all as council can change. So we have our 5% that you all graciously adopted. You can change that. What my recommendation would be, if you're considering a change, which you very well may be, is we have a formal comp study that's end-to-end, where they actually do... We have a third-party company under my purview. They do a deep dive through all the job descriptions. They contact all the cities. They get the same data for all of the employees. And then they do an analysis, which some of y'all were here, nobody was council, but y'all seen that from the prior one. That happens in 2021. And what our caution is, is that, talking to Charles specifically, is these cities that we compete against, what they tend to do and have done in the past is, when they do their formal comp studies, they're jumping 10, 12, 15% at a time. We're not going to be doing that. We're going to be jumping 4, 5% at a time. And so it's kind of pay me now or pay me later. That would be my caution, because the comp study may come in and say, nope, y'all are right where you need to be. They may come and say, you need a 3% adjustment based on the fact that y'all have been keeping up with it every year. But DPD just went from $49,000 starting salary to $64,000 starting salary. And they have to do that immediately. And so that's... Those are huge jumps that they have to overcome, and huge budget constraints the other way. I think we've been smart, because we're paying for the vehicle over time. We're not just having to write a big check, so.
So I have a question. Chief, it's going to cross over to your area also, but, you know, one of the things that is sort of not set well with me, and I've voiced this before, is that detectives are essentially officers. They're paid as an officer, but they do different work. And why we don't have a separate pay rate, if you will, or a differential for those individuals? And what can be done, what can be created? I know that now Charles is saying, okay, you're really diving into something that's your responsibility. But as a citizen, I just want to make sure all the guys are taken care of properly.
Sure.
Fairly, you know, and I want to be fair to them. As a councilman, it's got to be fair to both.
Right, absolutely.
But I see that as something that has just sort of stuck out in my mind ever since day one, when I started getting involved with this. And we haven't budged from that, so...
From an... He probably has a saying, and he can answer, but from an HR perspective, I'm going to look at, in being his business partner, I'm going to be looking at, how do you utilize people today? You know, Cheryl came to me, and she said, I need all of my people to be financial owners. Okay, we're going to start looking at, do you really? And what are they doing to do that? And my gut is, and actually, I know this, because we've had the conversation, he doesn't utilize that number of detectives that way. And so, again, you go back to, how do you want to allocate those resources? Are they doing something different? Yes. But from a chain of command, from a position control type operation, the chief is able to allocate any of his resources how he sees fit. And they're paid fairly and equitably, based on the skills that, by the way, they participated in and getting that compensation data. And they will continue to participate in. So that would be, from an HR perspective, if I only needed, and I'm making your number up, Chief, but if I only needed four detectives, I don't know that I need to create something totally different when 25 or 30% of the time, they're doing the normal comp officer type. Right, as long as they're paid comparably to the market, and I'm not underpaying them, and I have the ability to allocate my resources as needed, and I create a shift. If that's more... He needs more people out on the streets than necessarily a detective. And it's not my area, but just from an HR perspective, though.
Yeah, and too, is it does. It gives me the ability. It's just like, look, I need you... You know what? Things have gone to crap. I need all of you back in uniform and in patrol today. We'll worry about solving those other crimes later. I need you there today. It would make it more difficult for me to be able to do that if they were compensated differently, because then they would turn around and say, well, wait a minute, that's not my job anymore. It's like, no, from whence you came, you can go back to, which is patrol.
Okay.
Because patrol's the bread and butter, and that's where the rubber meets the road. And that's not that the detectives aren't important. They do do a different function. But I would argue that the patrolman's job today is much more difficult than that of the drivers. And the environment that we're operating in, you're more... You work basically regular days, just like somebody that's a banker. So you're basically, you know, you're on call. We rotate call. That's one outlier. But most of the time in your life is semi-normal as compared to a patrolman who's still having to deal with the shift. And the, you know, again, the environment that we're operating in, in today's world, patrol's a lot more dangerous than being a detective. It just is. And so I would make that... It's not that they're not very... And so, I would make that, it's not that they're not very valuable to me, but I don't know that it was, I think the benefits they get from having more normalcy in their world and having weekends off, I think that is.
The trade-off.
That's the trade-off.
Okay, alright.
Because I got patrolmen who would love to have weekends with their families and not work deep nights. So, that's kind of the carrot that they get for doing their job.
And Terry, I also think that's really not our role as council. And it's, I think ours is more directional, providing, you know, trying to allocate the resources at the high level and, you know, trust that the city manager is going to manage the directors and the leaders, you know, to do that. And if he's not doing that, then our role is there. And if they're not doing that, that's his role to take care of that. You know, I think when we start getting down into individual personnel issues, I think that's, you know, I think we get into a dangerous place. And then we also get, put ourselves in a position where people can come to us and try to affront us and, you know, it puts the structure out of balance, so, just.
Absolutely. Charles, did you want me to touch base on the 2025?
I'll start off the conversation because I know that's, that there's many council members that they want to talk about it.
Sure.
I want to mention it from our perspective. The, you know, we've talked in the past about going from a TMRS 25-year retirement city to a TMRS 20-year retirement system. And I know that there's, there's some police officers that have been real local about talking to the council and talking to us about, about that particular issue. The, and I have mixed emotions. The, I realize on one hand that we're one of the few cities, actually, in the metroplex, it's really down to us at Richardson, that have 25-year retirement. And remember, 25-year retirement means 25 years any age that you can retire. Or say if you don't have 25 years, say if even the Farmers Branch 25-year city, you only have 15 years, but you turn 60, you can still retire at age 60. So, it's 25 years any age or age 60. So, just keep in mind, that's how the policy works. Grand Prairie was, as of last year, was Grand Prairie, Richardson and Farmers Branch were the last of the three of the cities in the metroplex. Now, it's just Richardson and Farmers Branch. The, I, a number of things I want to point out is that when you're talking about TMRS benefits, TMRS has a multitude of benefits. There are, once you retire, you can have various options, or different cities have various options for COLA, the cost of living increases, and you have different percentages that a city can elect as to what kind of COLA you get for your retirement benefit. There's a provision called updated service credits, which is kind of complicated, but it's an important benefit to the employees. It's part of that TMRS annuity calculation. There's the, there's a provision about how often you get COLA increases. Is it recurring all the time, every year, or is it just whenever the city decides they want to give you an increase? So, when someone comes to you and says, okay, everybody else has 20 and we want Farmers Branch to have 25 to be like everybody else, keep in mind, there is about 10 to 15 different other iterations of TMRS that when I've done reviews of other cities around us, those cities either they don't have is, we have pretty much the Cadillac TMRS plan, the highest level of every provision you can get. And we've consistently had that through downturns into today, so we have a very good plan. The concern with going from 25 to 20 is that, you know, in terms of our ability to attract, you know, end of the day, with benefits, TMRS is a benefit. You look at, okay, is your benefit array of particular benefits, is it causing you to have problems, because you're so out of proportion with other cities, causing problems with higher? I would say that it's not. The people are not coming to us and saying, hey, we're, you know, we can't work for you because you're a 25-year city. That's not happening. You know, the chief, you know, and I feel very strongly about this, that, you know, it's not something that either one of us recommend. And there's a number of reasons for that. The first is, the, right now, you know, you hear that we are TMRS 2 to 1 city, meaning, remember, we're not on social security, so the employee contributes 7%, the city theoretically would be 14%, right? 2 to 1. Because of past actuarial issues with TMRS, which they're, they have since rectified, we effectively, they deal with the COLA increase, we're currently paying right at about 19%.
19%.
And that's to catch up for the past actuarial issues and to catch up. At some point, we'll back, get back down to 2 to 1, but for now, it's 19%. Going from 25 to 20 here increases that contribution from 19% to 20%. To me, that's a psychological, at 20%, you're starting to get into a large, an increasing larger contribution that at some point, residents will, I think, have a concern with because most residents don't have a pension. Additionally, the liability increases from $32.9 million to $34.6. That's almost $2 million bucks additional liability. It's a benefit. If you talk to most, not just police officers, but any employee in the city, if you ask them if we have 20, as opposed to 20, or would they retire at 20, they're going to tell you no. Because, the most of them, you're going to, there's maybe a handful of employees, five employees, that have special circumstances. But the most employees, because the annuity is based on how long you stay, you really can't afford to retire at 20, and most of them will tell you that. They'll say, you know, we can't, we need to work 25 plus to be able to retire. So, it's a benefit that the people admittedly, when I talk to them, that will not use. Going into a revenue cap environment, that we talked about that SB 2, the increased cost of going from 25 to 20 is roughly about $330,000 per year, every year.
Compound.
In, you know, forever. And then lastly, you know, I look at, just from a public safety perspective, you know, if you look at the market adjustment, the step increases and the shift differential pay, you're right at $720,000. If you add the 330 on top of that or a portion of that 330 on top of that, you're bumping up against a million bucks of ongoing costs. It's, at some, at some point, to me, that just becomes excessive in terms of that one-year increase for a group of employee benefits. It just, it just does. And so, I throw all that information out on the table. I know you may have other questions, but but I just want to let you know, kind of my perspective, you know, if it's something that the council feels that, you know, we have to be, we have to do it, then we'll do it. But I just want to let you know that why you're hearing this recommendation from the chief and I not to do it. So, with that, I opened up.
And the data doesn't, at least from talking to the employees, there are literally a handful of specific employees that have other opportunities. They have special skill sets that they're probably going to go work for.
Private sector.
Private sector, have a six-figure plus job, and they then could take their retirement as well. So, that's, that's not the norm. And so, just from a comp perspective, the return on investment just doesn't seem to be there to add another $330,000 a year and have people say that they feel good, but not act upon it. I don't know that that's dollars well spent. That's, that's an HR perspective.
Terry?
So, currently, we pay a retirement medical stipend or?
We pay a stipend, yes. Actually, that took $39 million off of our books. But yes, we provide, if they are on our coverage, when they leave, they get a $7,400 a year stipend if they're eligible.
Yeah, they're not eligible anymore.
Yeah, and I, like me, I could be here 40 years. I'm not eligible for that plan. It's a grandfather plan, so.
Okay. And do we pay that forever or if they go get another job elsewhere?
No, we pay that, we pay that till they're 65.
Till 65?
When they're 65, they come off and they go to Medicare.
Okay.
And that's a savings plan. We designed it very uniquely. You won't find this typically on the market. But we created an HSA plan for them that they can actually roll over and build. So, if they don't use it, those dollars are, they're able to allocate those dollars while they're on Medicare. They can use it on go. That's a very unique feature because I can tell you, I didn't find that anywhere on the marketplace. I had to contact legal counsel to make sure that we could do it, and we could, so we did.
Okay, and so, currently, and this is sort of getting off of police and fire, but for all employees, the employees are paying one-third of their medical?
About that, yeah. It ranges from, and it's usually, depending on the year, and actually, quite frankly, so to give you the covering of that, we are the only city in the state of Texas that has remained flat or less on medical expenses across the board. We're the only one. United Healthcare came and told us that, said that there is no other unicorn like you all.
For seven years.
Yes, for seven years, we have remained by God. So, I can tell you what that cost should have been with medical completion. We should have had a $2.8 million in cost just in that alone. So, yes, when you do that, as year over year, sometimes it's 33, sometimes it's 34, but it's always within a 2%.
Okay. Because I just want you to show me in the budget, where, where is what we pay for medical in this budget? Because that's a health care claim.
Sure.
And then what would be the deductible? Is that vary for family size?
It varies depending on if you are a family owner, if you are individual.
I've still baked into that.
It is, yes. But I actually have a model, Councilman Lim, that past Councilman Fredrick used to ask for on an annual basis. And it's the same model and it shows the same numbers. And I think he just got tired of asking me because it was the same. Yep, here's your 33, here's your 34, here's your 33, but I'm happy to be.
Three dash three, and here.
I'm a two-tale.
Three dash three.
Has life and health together. It's $3.6 million just for the general fund.
But as you're going there, I think that the good news stored for our citizens and quite frankly, for our employees because they're not having an experience of medical claims, is that we be, we can, we can actually give you a finite number of $2.8 million that we've avoided in cost because of that, so.
Okay, while they're looking around, I got a question. So, you know, I go back and forth mentally on the 2025 scale. You were in the military in the 2025, like, how does that, I mean, if you think someone comes on it, they became a fireman at 21 and they do 20 years in, their retirement's not enough to retire at 41, right?
Most people get a second career.
The second career, so that's with the military, the same thing. You do your 20 and you get out and you go on to, so that's the philosophical kind of direction we're looking to right now. So, they're going to go on again and I don't know, and so I'm struggling between some days, I'm like, yeah, let's, let's do it and leave Richardson out of the drive, and then some days, I'm like, it just doesn't make sense.
You know, in the military, it's a little bit different because you can be deployed anywhere in the world and at moments notice that kind of thing. And so, it's, it's set out there as a bogey kind of thing to like encourage people to stay that long. You know, but people are, after 16 years, become really reluctant to retire or to leave, right? Because you've got so much invested along the way. It's probably fairly similar for, for police. And I think the new idea is that policing has now become so dangerous that if we moved to 20, would we have more people punching out at 20? In order to, like the officer you just lost, to say, dude, I'm done. And so, that's kind of the trade-off too. If you move to 20, are we going to have more of a hiring problem? Have more officers punching out? I don't know.
Yeah, possibly the military uses 20 years to kind of push the people out at the end too, right?
Yeah, yeah, well, see, if you don't make E7, you're punched out at 18.
Yeah.
So, you know, and so, you, you have to, there's an upper out in the military. I don't think, you don't have that in policing. You can stay an officer for the whole time.
You could be.
And some choose to do that, some choose to do that, right? But in the military, the difference, well, I guess it's the same here, is you're not vested until 20. Anytime, you get nothing before 20, and after that, it's 2 and 1/2% a year.
So, I have a question maybe a different way, just for philosophical discussion, and that is, if you have somebody who's eligible at 20, and my concern is if we adopted 20, how many more people would become eligible and what would that do if they all decide to walk? It could sort of bankrupt our city in more ways than one. We'd be short officers, we'd be short people in parks or whatever, because it's all departments. It's not just police.
Right, that's TMRS is everybody.
It's everybody, so that's number one. But is that officer, and let you, because that's, that's probably the highest stress position in the city, the highest stressed employee, police officer. And is that, are they still as good at 22, 23, 24 as they are 20? Or are they beginning to sort of peak and, from a physical standpoint, from a medical, mental standpoint? And so.
I would say that the wisdom that they bring is invaluable.
I get, I get that.
Obviously, I can't run like I did. It's just, that's just not going to happen, but I chose to provoke it so it didn't happen. So, but I think the wisdom is invaluable, especially in the training arena. You know, they've seen a lot, they've done a lot, and yeah, are they, are they, are they the 21-year-old that's wanting to go to deep nights and rid the world of every drug? No, they're not. But they're also much better at the community policing side. That's why, you know, any, any team is made up of a bunch of different people with different gifts. And the gifts that my more tenured officers bring to it are the stability, the ability to communicate very well with the community. Now, are they going to win the foot chase against the 17-year-old who just, probably not, but they're smart enough to know how to use their car to get them? So, I just, I think that, that full balance, I, you know, I get what you're saying. You know, they're probably not quite the go-getter that a 21-year-old is, but I don't need that whole much. I don't need a whole department of those.
And I think it depends on you finding a job. Do you want somebody super gumbo? Yes. Do you want them all to be that? Probably not. You need some balance of five.
Well, and I understand that, you know, I'd say the same probably for fire because everybody's going to be a guy running with the hose. You're going to want to be a driver, so it's maybe a little easier assignment as you, as you get older who looks to do different things that aren't as physically demanding perhaps, so.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the guys, again, with commitment to fitness, commitment to resilience and mental health, I think that extends people's career. In the fire department, I think a lot of, I looked at our data, the average retirement years of service is 29 in six months. So, even at a 25-year retirement, the fire department doesn't go at 25. There you go.
I can't, Councilman, I can't remember the age off the top of my head, but there are special provisions around high stress, not the, not the married workforce, because step workforce has some special provisions through TMRS that their age is actually, can be less than 60, depending on the service.
55.
I think it's 55.
55 is much, you go on your deferred comp with the tax minimum.
Right, but that's just in special treatment for high-stress occupations that are doing that. That doesn't apply to the rest of the workforce.
You need more questions for Mr. Beasley? All right, thank you very much.
That there's a lot of PowerPoint presentations and things like that in terms of the ways that we're conveying information. Death by PowerPoint was one of them. Death by PowerPoint was one of those things. So what we wanted to show now is just our budget video.
There's a simple abiding truth of the twenty-first century. Whether you're a business professional, a student, an athlete, retiree, or a shopkeeper, the simple truth is that Farmer's Branch is a great place to be. And as the second decade of the twenty-first century gets way to the twenty-twenty's, the great news is that Farmer's Branch is only getting better. Welcome to Farmer's Branch and our roadmap for success. Another truth is that people are finding their way down that roadmap and are moving to Farmer's Branch in greater numbers than ever before. According to U.S. Census estimates, the population of Farmer's Branch now exceeds forty thousand, a dramatic thirty-three percent jump from just five years ago, when the estimate was slightly over thirty thousand. One of the reasons is the incredible value residents get in services delivered, including police, fire, library, park and recreation, public works, planning, and so much more. Still, did you know that property taxes only pay for about half of the city services you receive? If we only relied on residential property taxes, we could only fund the police and fire departments and the library. In fact, your property taxes only pay for forty-eight percent of general fund services. Sales tax accounts for twenty-seven percent, and other fees and services make up twenty-five percent. So when it comes to the city of Farmer's Branch, you're literally getting more than you're paying for. It has been said before that neighborhoods are the heartbeat of Farmer's Branch, but businesses are the lifeblood. The Farmer's Branch commercial community helps make that possible with businesses in the city, accounting for about fifty percent of our twelve square miles of land area and nearly eighty percent of the overall tax base. Although the property tax rate remains the same in this proposed budget, the valuation of properties in Farmer's Branch by the Dallas Central Appraisal District has increased, with the city's total taxable value up from five-point-six billion last year to six-point-two billion dollars today. As such, we expect property tax revenue will come in eleven-point-four percent higher than last year at thirty-one-point-five billion dollars. We also expect a jump in sales tax estimated at a nineteen percent increase from last year of two-point-eight million dollars to seventeen-point-five million for the year. On the other hand, because the bustling building boom on the west side is settling into a more normal pattern of development, building permanent revenue is expected to drop by fifty-three percent or two-point-two million dollars. So while there is no property tax rate increase proposed this year, it is important to know how your tax bill breaks down since you pay more than just city taxes. Right now, the city of Farmer's Branch accounts for about twenty-three percent of your total property tax bill. Dallas County takes about ten percent. School district taxes amount to approximately fifty-two percent of your total bill. And various taxing entities such as the Dallas County Community College District and Parkland Hospital make up the other fifteen percent. When you look at comparable cities, Farmer's Branch continues to check in on the low end of the city property tax rate spectrum. In the coming year, notable expenditures include one-point-two million dollars for replacement of a fire truck, Mansky library improvements totaling nine-hundred-thirty-eight thousand dollars, which include a roof and HVAC replacement, parking lot repairs, in addition to ongoing regular library expenses and materials purchased. Two-hundred thousand dollars for a new roll-off truck for Public Works. Two new police officers, police ship differential pay, and step raises for officers. This is the result of a recent compensation study to bring police and fire up to market rates. Likewise, we're budgeting for the addition of six new firefighters and step raises for all firefighters. The combined total of all public safety increases is one million dollars. Due to the continuing increase in cost of purchasing water from the city of Dallas and wastewater treatment from the Trinity River Authority, this budget does include a water and sewer rate increase of five percent, which will equal about three dollars and ninety-one cents per month for a household with average usage of six thousand gallons. There is so much more in this budget, and we encourage you to check out all of the bits and crannies of the proposed fiscal year budget at farmersbranchbudget.com. Indeed, there are so many different routes on the roadmap to success, but Farmer's Branch is on course, immensely proud of our heritage, but with one eye firmly fixed on the future. With an ever-expanding and diverse population, visionary leadership, and passionate participants in local government, Farmer's Branch will continue to prosper in the years to come.
Strong, ready, but.
So our, so since Tom wasn't able to be here, we brought him here in video form. And similar to last year, our intention is to use that video on our website as well as in future council updates to kind of tee up any budget discussions. Maybe we show that, help our residents and other businesses who may be coming to upcoming public areas to understand a little bit about the budget, but from a thousand-foot level, and then supplement it with any other questions or things that council would like to see in updated discussions.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is it going to be in Spanish?
Well, the video has been produced. I can check with Tom and see if, you know, something can be done to make it be in Spanish, or maybe even put subtitles or something with it.
You know, the cost of that video is not that much. To actually have it done in Spanish would not be that hard. If something council wants us to.
Tom was speaking Spanish, though.
Yeah.
And part of the magnificent videos is Tom's character and delivery.
No, I agree. I, I, he has a gift. I completely agree.
I'm working on pulling it apart and putting it exactly back right together. That's what I wanted my presentation to be.
But Councilor mentioned how to remember the budget itself this time.
I understand that, but at least just having something, you know, it's going to be really hard to read, but at least having, I mean, we have fifty percent Hispanic population. You don't know which is Spanish speaking, but yes.
So I made the comment that we sent out a card, put out a card that would direct people to a website or whatnot to go take the citizen survey. And even though you're asking for it to be in Spanish, you said a lot of Hispanics in the city don't use computers, okay? But they all have mobile phones.
You're right, but they use social media. So the way I'm seeing it is if I can post a video on social media, they do use that.
We also have this discussion, I'm guessing, two years ago, of what needs to be in Spanish legally and how the city is going to conduct its business. And, you know, if we have to go back and start putting everything in Spanish, that's going to add considerable cost, printing, video, production, et cetera, et cetera.
I'm not asking to do everything, but the budget is a big, is a big part of what we do. And so I think that for something this big, I'm not asking for everything, but I'm just advocating for the people in my district, which I know a lot of whom are Spanish-speaking. And you're right, we don't, we don't know how they communicate. But I'm just asking the question if it's going to be, if it's going to be available, if it's a possibility.
Yeah, I, I think it would be a great idea to do it one year, just so we could get the people complaining. And we could say, well, we're just trying to attract somebody to come to one of our budget meetings because we put it out in English and nobody comes.
I don't, I don't think it'll be a big deal to dub over that video like they do movies that are translated to Spanish and just, someone could go back through, read it in Spanish, and Tom can re-record it. He didn't have to re-record every scene.
He was moving to one language, but the audio's in a different language.
I wasn't watching his mouth.
I mean, you could do subtitles. You can do a lot of different things. I'm just, you know.
You can subtitle it real easy.
Dub over?
Yeah.
A dub over is, is easy.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
If council wants us to do that. See what kind of feedback we get.
So when is this going to be released to the public? Could we dub it before this gets out?
How long, how long, Mandela?
Like, can we get this, if we want it so, could we have a secondary audio channel, whatever it is, for this video before it gets to the streets? Or is it already to the streets?
I'll check with Tom to start getting that. You want the slides in? Like, where it says the two firefighters, you want that in?
No, because he talked about it. He talked about it during the.
Okay, then that's really easy.
Yeah, he talked. I mean, he didn't really think, but since he talked about it, I don't think that'll, I don't think he'd do that. I, I'm just saying, I'd love to post this on social, which I know I have followers that are Spanish-speaking.
Let me check on what's possible.
Sure. Thank you.
I'm fixing Tom.
Oh, okay. Well, let's not blow him up.
Me?
Okay.
Go for it.
This is the whole, I've been waiting for you since we started this meeting yesterday. This one right here.
It's just patience, Phil.
I know.
Let me get to all my questions.
So here's the other numbers up a little bit, because I got the actual ones as of yesterday, so it's a little bit different than yours. But anyway, can't tell you how late it I am to be after lunch, after Public Works, Police and Fire, and after a spectacular video where everybody's thinking of PowerPoint. So anyways, I'll bring it to you, I'll dazzle you. But I want to, you want to ride down memory lane a little, little bit first before we get to some of the other presentations? Because cost recovery really frames what we're doing now in Parks and Recreation. It's using data to make informed business decisions, offering a little more like a business while still serving the residents. And so remember roughly a year and a half ago, at least from my recollection, we started talking about this cost recovery at the most interesting interview with the city I've ever had, where I had my interview, and then they said, hey, do you have time to stick around with the Parks and Recreation Board, City Council, and see a joint session? And that's when we really talked about the cost recovery number. And I think Councilman Bob Gardner, he said, contain costs, find a way to increase revenue. And to me, you're speaking my language because that's what I've been doing for a long time in cities. And so, you know, we're going to get started. I'll show you where we've been, where we've headed, where we are now, where we're headed. So a little bit of background, I want to say that was probably March of twenty eighteen. We started having those conversations. I came on April thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Cost recovery numbers for fiscal year sixteen-seventeen. I'm going to compare these because that was the first, the last full year of not really focusing on this. So we did a lot of things last year that increased that number, and then several more this year that did that. So Recreation Center was at forty percent, Aquatic Center thirty-nine, Branch Connection six, Storico Park at four, Special Lence at five percent. Now, these are without CIP projects, so these are operational costs. This includes all the janitorial and everything else, electricity, everything that goes in the budget, except for the large-scale projects. So an update, we did some shifts in philosophy at the end of last year and then also this year. And we included reorganization of staff. We did this three different times, one of which was at the Recreation Center. We were able to do some creative things, pinch down four full-time, or six full-time staff to four. We allocated those positions in other parts of our department that fills the needs that we would have had later on down the road and didn't increase our budget at all. Identifying and setting specific goals and programs for facilities. We went through facility by facility and said, what are our areas of opportunity? Went ahead and scheduled, set a plan in place and said, hey, these are some things we can do now. These are some things we can do down the road. Here's ways we can be a little bit more efficient. Creation and implementation of marketing plan. We did a pretty robust marketing plan, again, looking at why we do things. I tell staff, we ask three questions. Can we serve the residents? Can we make money? And does it increase hotel room nights? If the answer is no to all three of those, why are we doing them? The answer's got to be yes to one of those at least. So we created that business plan, certain facility objectives in line, and how each initiative ties back to those. Refining the purpose behind each decision. Again, it's just asking that question. When we're doing a program, how many people is it serving and how many residents in particular? So we do a resident split. And a lot of things we found, hey, we might be serving a hundred people, but two of them are residents. Why are we doing this? Is it, is it out of deficit to us? If it is, we certainly shouldn't do it. And changing several business practices to match marketing. I think they'll talk about this, but we did several things. The idea is how do we serve residents better, but do things with more of a business mindset? And there's several ways you can do that. I know there's one decision that we went through, and we all know, was at the Branch Connection, that had some kickback. We did probably twenty others that nobody ever heard about that really increased the bottom line results. So year-to-date cost recovery, as of yesterday, so I had the actual numbers pulled up, so it's going to be slightly different than you have. There are fifty-eight percent cost recovery, if you'll remember. It was, I think, thirty-nine percent. The last slide, Aquatic Center, fifty-six percent. That's actually today's number, is fifty-nine percent. They have done outstanding. I can tell you for a standalone Aquatic Center to get at sixty percent is almost unheard of. So they're actually relieving the cost recovery fifty-nine. Branch Connection, that's actually moved to ten percent as of yesterday's numbers. Storico Park at six, Special Lence at eleven. And again, these are, this was an old slide, but I have to do it yesterday. So anyways, you'll see basically cost recovery numbers every single service area. We've increased by fifty percent of what it used to be. So back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. So our total departmental revenue for fiscal year eighteen-nineteen, when compared to sixteen-seventeen, that's actually, in other words, as of yesterday, we're trending thirty-five percent above where we were. So that's us thirty-one point five percent. Operational expenditures are trending down despite increases in programming and related expenses. Nearly every goal outlined at the start of fiscal year has been achieved. Remember that program I talked about each department? We've hit almost all of those, exactly as we were planning. So where do we go in the future? We're planning to focus on grant writing. I'll talk about one of those in the next presentation here. Continue growing the sponsorship program that we put in place. We now have somebody in place to kind of sell those and solicit those and spring on great. And increase awareness in marketing efforts. We had very specific focuses on what we did. To give an example, day passes at the Rex Center, day pass at the Aquatic Center, targeted areas for the Branch Connection membership. Everyone is at an all-time high rate now. So that shows that marketing with intention does pay off. So that's what I have with cost recovery for now. I know you have questions.
Sorry, and I want to start out by saying, you know, because I'm going to ask more questions here in a minute. But I think you're doing a great job, and I'm so excited that you're here. I think you're the right guy for the job. You know, but I look at the budget.
Here it goes.
You know, the budget, and I'm going to cheat because my eyes are bad. I'm going to get a little more light here. So I can read these numbers. But, so, when you look at the Aquatic Center, our revenue in year twenty-seven, twenty eighteen was three-sixty-five, and our projected revenue for next year is three-fifty.
We're already way above. So I actually have, if you want, at the end of this, we can get together. I'll give you the updated spreadsheet that I have and every line item of this.
So the budget, so the budget's going to change, right? I'm talking about the projection for next year, what's in the budget is three-fifty. And, you know, so that's what I'm looking at. I'm looking, I'm looking at the, what the projections are and what we budgeted.
And I'm certainly comfortable with puppy notes, because we're kind of in uncharted territory with some of this stuff. So Rachel, I'm getting this off the top of my head, but I think Aquatics revenue right now is at four-thirty-five-ish today. And we still have seven weeks left to go, so.
Awesome.
Yeah.
You know, so, and the same thing on the Senior Center of the budget. Two years ago was, we ended at thirty-two and a half. We're projecting fifty, but we have a thousand people paying twenty-five dollars.
And again, we're already, we're in the fifties and close to sixty on that one year-to-date.
So, you know, and then, you know, events, two years ago, we were at ninety-nine. And this year, we're projecting fifty.
And that one's, that one's a little bit kind of up and down. Where that one comes from is sometimes we get large sponsors for twenty-five thousand, let's say, and that's going to make up a bulk for that. We are charging. So some of the things we're doing, as you all know, Blue Moon Bluegrass. So provided we get no rain, can we, please, do that? That'll be a big revenue driver. That's gone from ten dollars to twenty-sixteen-seventeen now. So, so yeah, that should turn it up.
Quick question on the Aquatic Center. I know Carrollton's using our pool somewhere. Is that four-hundred-thousand-dollar number not including Carrollton numbers or?
No, that does include some of the day passes, and that is going to spike that up. So we anticipate that going down a little bit next year. But even before that Carrollton influx that we had, we were trending up in various areas. So one of the things we did was, we wanted to be the lifeguard training hub for the DFW area. And we certainly had that, and that's been a big revenue driver. Increased swim lesson prices, and we had a ton of swim lessons this year, so that was a big one as well. And there was one, oh, we increased. And there was one, oh, we increased some of the pass prices there, a very select year that increased a little bit. So it was trending up to begin with, marketing efforts and targeted areas did spike that, but certainly Carrollton did increase that as well.
How many people do we have on an average day that swim indoors?
So on an average day that swim indoors, we had about 16,000 over the course of last year, and that's what we're trending at kind of now. We have 73,000, we should finish it about overall at the aquatic complex this year.
So 16,000, and, but how many unique individuals do you think that is?
I have to pull the unique individuals. Yeah, I don't, do you have any idea?
Yeah, I have that number, oh, I can help.
Yeah, so we'll find it.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see how many unique individuals, and what the breakdown of the cost is between indoor and outdoor. And to find out.
Cost recovery, basically.
Yeah, and to kind of break those up two different ways.
And I think, go ahead. Yeah, I think the important thing to recognize with the Aquatic Center too, it's a very high-use facility overall, but a lot of things that we do outdoor in the summertime, so swim lessons, toddler time, various, various things, a lot of those end up transferring over in North Rock the Year Two. Obviously, when the weather's cold, it's not as fun to be inside swimming pool, but people still are learning to swim, which is great, and it's the best cost-recovery facility as of now, so.
Awesome. That's, you know, I'd be interested to see your revised revenue numbers. Because, you know, I just looked at it and said, hmm, this doesn't match what I've seen.
We were talking about, she, the service, she all sent me what council, and I said, oh no, this was pulled June 30th, I remember.
Yeah, good pull.
And we get a ton of our revenue in summertime, as we know. And so every day, I mean, I pulled it two days ago, and then it jumped another 27,000 and 24,000.
Yeah, I think though, after we pulled, we had an opportunity to sit down and make sure that the estimates that we were putting in were ones that you felt comfortable with bringing forward in terms of revenue estimates. Now, what happens is additional information comes in after, you know, we make those estimates, and additional information to our benefit.
Yeah.
Any questions moving forward? So that fuels the next presentation, which is a Recreation Center improvement plan. And one of the reasons for this is, I know this is outcome number seven, that you thought decided at the last retreat, was to build and maintain and create a plan for high-use facilities, or something along the lines, somewhere along those lines? It was like, yeah, that's kind of it. So one of the things, the Rex Center, we're going on year 16 right now, so that's a long time without any major improvements. So my good friend over here, Kevin, and I have been working on a plan on how, how can we maximize this space that we have? Because it's a large facility, and what's the return going to be? And what would that look like moving forward? So he'll kind of help me out on a few of these areas, and walk you through this, and kind of a plan for funding that we have. Oh, the font's kind of messed up on this, hopefully it'll show up better on your iPad. So a background, we opened June 10th, 2004, so we're going on year 16 now. A facility includes 60,000, 600 square feet of total space. I highlighted these three areas, weight training, group X, and childcare, because this is going to be where your main revenue source is coming from. And especially with growth, in terms of growth, this is where most of the people are going to go, so I kind of highlighted that for now. Original focus was on youth and teen programs. So reason why a lot of the other facility space isn't included in these three numbers is because it was used for teen programming. There is a teen lounge that's lightly used now, except for in the summertime. You know, we have a large space in the lobby there, we have a gymnastics room, we have two gyms, a basketball team. That takes a lot of the space, and that was the original focus. And as I said, no major improvements made to date. So changing needs, various other presentations highlighted this. The population in 2004 was 26,604, we're just over 40,000 today. So simple math shows you need to increase by about 50% in our population over the time facility's been open. So some statistics for you, 20% of the US population 6 and up have at least one fitness membership, and demand is currently at a record high, according to Ursa and Forbes Magazine. Average median income is growing at a rate significant, that significantly outpaces the state and nation. And I say that because most people that purchase a fitness membership, not classify this even though it's more than a fitness facility, is $75,000 and up, and we're just below that, but we are trending up, so we're going to hit that number here at some point in the future, I believe. 81% of the fastest-growing market segment, Informers Branch says they would like to exercise, according to Nielsen. And that market segment is between 25 and 44 years of age. And upgrading fitness facility can help retain members, increase member engagement, and recruit new members, according to subjects. So proposed reconfigurations, I want to draw your attention first to the background here. So this is our entire freeway space here. If you work out on a regular basis, it's a little bit difficult. I work out all the time, and actually don't go here because the space is so small. So if that tells you anything, it's probably me for a little bit of spatial reconfiguration. So what we're proposing would add 1,900 square feet to the weight training space, 500 square feet of added group exercise space, and 300 square feet of added childcare space. That's roughly 50% more when compared to the other numbers. So adding, going along the lines of our population, 50% more, 50% more population. What we're proposing is kind of a simple rehab, new flooring paint, enhanced locker rooms, and additional, as well as upgraded equipment. So Kevin will come up here and talk about the configurations, walk you through one by one.
Before I go through this, I just want to give you a little background on how facilities looks at, normally, how we look at building refreshes or renovations. So, because that's part of our 30-year long-range planned funding, which we have like 30,000, 630,000 dollars a year. And so normally, when we do this, where we've been developing the plan for the last six and a half years, is when we did this at City Hall in the Senior Center, when we looked at paint at this point, is what I do when we, because in this year, we had money in the budget to paint the Rex Center. Mike had this vision, the money guy, he's got the plan. But anyway, and so we had the money, and so normally, I retain the services of a commercial decorator, a limited scope. She comes in and it's kind of to decide to color, but we're looking at, we're going to have to renovate and refresh this building at some point. So she comes up with a plan, two or three options. She looks at, okay, all the fixtures, the bathrooms, the tile, everything, and comes back with these options. So we have a roadmap, a master plan, so that way, when it comes time to do the bathrooms, or come time to do this, everything's going to color accordingly. We got a roadmap. So that's what I was, did with the Rex Center. And, but part of this, in talking to Mike, we also included a space assessment study as part of this, to maximize the use of the space to tie into what Mike was wanting. So these are the areas he was talking about.
And if you click it over, it'll go one by one.
Thank you. Now, Sarah, this is the teen room he was talking about, this is the magnolial room across from the meeting rooms. This is going to be exercise equipment, right? And so this, this one, we're actually going to be doing this year, we're putting a new rubber floor down. The vision for the future, when we do, this all goes through, is we're going to open the space, because we've got doors over here, and there's windows in between these columns, so we're going to take all that out to make it an opening, where you can just walk in there, and it's open. It's not a closed room for this. That's one of the spaces. Oh, sorry. We're going to review this space, which could be a program reception or reception area. Mike probably has more thoughts on that. Right now, the children's area, and then the vending area. Children's area, the wall kind of goes here and comes back. So we're going to redo the vending area, this is kind of where they've got a ping-pong table and everything, to really expand the children's area. Make the vending machine area a lot smaller, which, as Mike said, that's a revenue source there. The check-in, we're actually redoing the entire check-in back. We have some space for the office, a big open area here, a lot of underutilized space. The check-in, we're going to redo, we're going to push this out, kind of squeeze the entry point, so that everybody's checking in with their cars, and they're a member and everything. At the same time, we're going to, this isn't exactly what we're going to do. We're going to have some staff office space in here, cubicles. But we're, on the second floor, we're going to do something with the conference room upstairs. So we're going to make probably the back half of this just a small conference room for staff.
And to touch on the workout space a little bit, I know some people are like, whoa, what are you going to do with upstairs? So upstairs would stay largely similar, freeways would come down, opening up that space so you have the proper spacing between everything. We have some larger space to do some stretching, ab stuff, some cables, and we keep the machines up there. So a lot, a lot of it's going to stay the same, it'll just be refreshed with some new stuff and spacing it out. Downstairs, you're going to have the freeways, so if you ever have a meeting there again, you don't have to listen to, boom, boom.
That was going to be my point, because I often attend meetings in the rooms over there, and you hear the boom, boom, boom. And so, this will be quieter and reduce the noise for those meeting spaces?
Yes, definitely.
And over here, the gymnastics area, because we're going to lose some storage in this whole plan, we're going to expand an office that's over there now, and then we're going to make this viewing area into like a storage, storage area. Currently, right now, at this side, what we're going to do here is there's a storage room, and I think they use it for...
It used to be used for massage area.
So there's kind of two rooms there, that we're going to open this whole space up to make more room for equipment, we're going to take these two rooms out. This is where the current conference room is. It's not a very high-use space, it's not used a lot. And so what we're going to do is tear up the wall between these, expand that dance studio.
And kind of a nice part about that, if you've been over here before, the spin class is over here out in the open, very loud music, kind of intrusive to these people. You kick that over here, makes a lot more sense, you can store the bikes here, have the class, open it up, so just a more efficient use of space.
Will that impact the dance classes that go over there?
So we wouldn't have them going on at the same time, and it shouldn't. We would, we could rearrange the schedule and make it work, but I think a lot of people would actually very much prefer this over here than having the bikes over there out open. We get a lot of those complaints as it is, where it's great yet.
And down here is where we have an office, a coffee lounge area, expanding that. And the other area we didn't address is over here. We're actually, there's a big storage room here, where there's washer and dryer, which are not doing tile service now. So we're going to take this space and we're going to open this back area. Where we have a stretch mat, a stretching area, which ties more into the track area. And the other thing I'll point out, normally with, Mike's the money guy, but the, normally when on the facilities, when we look at long-range approach, actually, you are, I'm sorry, but he's got the plan. Charles approves it.
I just make sure it's approved under Gatsby.
But anyway, normally, when we look at the long-range refreshes and stuff, it's a pay-as-you-go type system. We just, we have a plan, and as we have the funding, it needs it, and we'll go ahead and do this, so I've got the master plan. And this thing, Mike's going to get to the nitty-gritty of this. This is probably the only building with a high use and a high potential for revenue that could justify doing this maybe all at once.
Yeah, thanks. So as I alluded to before, the population's growing, the demand is growing, our income base is growing. I won't go into every single little calculation we've been through, I'm not that I'm used to look at this, but I look at the demographics, the income, probable revenue, reasons why, statistics, all of that stuff, to see what the payoff would be. But first, the loose, kind of rough bid that we, Kevin had got, was $1.2 million to complete what you saw in today's money. One of the ideas we pitched, and you'll see in the budget, is what if we earmarked $400,000 in our budget? And the reason being is, you did all these changes, we're doing what we can to save money, we're going to submit a flat budget, because we wanted to do cost containment before. If we can save that money, and then allocate, tie that into critical business outcome seven, we have a flat budget, but we're still maintaining our high-use facilities, can we do that? And so, that's what you see in there, this year, 400,000, we should be able to save and roll over. Next year, we have the 400,000, again, flat budget, so that would give us $800,000 in roughly a few months as the budget turns over. And then we need another year, of course, to do that, so roughly 24 months. Problem is, construction costs are escalating. Now, that's steel, a lot of that, but business is good in Texas, as we all know too. So worst-case scenario, this cost is 1.5 instead of 1.2 in 24 months, and then it goes on from there, and you keep kind of chasing and catching up. Now, again, that might be a little high, we could probably get it done for cheaper, because we're not doing major construction, but we are bringing in several trades that are making lots of money these days. So what's the solution to rising costs? I always like to give a few different options. Phased approaches, Kevin was talking about, pay-as-you-go. We have 400,000, let's do 400,000 worth of stuff, but again, you, we talked about PowerPoint by, death by PowerPoint, this is death by construction, right? 24 months of construction, sounds awful to me. So we started looking at grants, I alluded to this earlier. Texas Park and Wildlife has a matching grant, a city of our size, they will award up to $750,000. We're working on that grant right now, it's quite extensive, but they awarded $16.2 million last year for the state of Texas. Several of our neighbors got the grant, only three of which, I believe, got indoor grants. I think our demographics are perfect for something like that, I think we have so much going on that ties into what they're looking for. It's such a unique project, that I think we have a pretty good shot at getting it. McKinney got $750,000 last year for what seemed like a far less beneficial project, I don't, I don't know for sure, but... And then Fort Worth was awarded too, both indoor and outdoor. So outdoor, as I get to the park playground, would be one we look to for next year. So something to think about, if we want to go the grant route, though, before we submit it, it's due in December, we need a council resolution saying we do have up to this amount of money to devote to this project if awarded the grant. So keep that in mind as well. So there is a chance, if we go for that, we can get it done next year, perhaps. Return on $1.2 million investment, so I said I went through the calculations, worst-case scenario, it's 12.3 years. We're still ahead of the 16-year cycle we're at right now as far as rehabbing. I do believe these facilities need to be done a little bit more, probably in the eight to 10-year range at worst. Mid-case, 4.47 years, it's a little more aggressive, but we've seen what we can do with marketing efforts. I know firsthand what can be done in these facilities. Random facility, that was 120% cost recovery, including CIP, 130% beyond at $3.6 million, so I know what can be done. Best-case scenario, 2.5 years. So there's a wind-up in the pitch, any questions?
When you make these changes, will we need to buy more equipment to fill the space?
Yes, and that's, yes, and that's in the budget, so we have some this year. Typically, each year, we allocated $50,900 for equipment and repairs. We still have most of that money left, that we're looking to buy equipment now as part of that. Next year, the budget, you'll see, there's some money in, kind of rearranged some line items in there to more appropriately fit what we're buying, but that money's in there as well. So between the two years, we should have what we need to get to fill both spaces.
And do you foresee, I mean, these changes, you're talking about really making a quality gym experience. Do you foresee separate memberships where, you know, you had a general to come in and play open basketball, or?
Yeah.
You know, do you see weight trainers that, you know, that will be coming in and working, and we'll get a percentage of, I mean, what are?
Yeah, so when I go in and I look at things, I look, what are your market differentiators, right? What are you trying to get? And right now, the way our memberships are split, you can get a basic membership that gives away, what I tell, the unique elements for $10 a year. And that's the basketball court, the walking track, and the sort of teen lounge. And that's, those are kind of our market differentiators right now. And then we also separate off the aquatic facility. I think long-range, you could look at it in combining all of those, getting rid of the $10 a year basic membership. And by the way, these numbers are based off of fees, we haven't changed in 16 years. So that would give us the opportunity to actually increase even just a little bit, to get to somewhat market rate. It'd be the best deal in town, and we have a ton of people.
You know, $30 a month, you gotta weigh.
We're at 15 right now, yeah, yes, we're at 15 right now. So $30 a month, you start getting closer to the real nice cost-recovery numbers.
So I have a question about, oh, sorry, I have a question about the configuration. So I have memberships at different places, right? I go to 24 Hour Fitness, it's two levels, right? Because there are good things and bad things when you talk about two-level gyms. Have you all thought about putting the cardio downstairs and leading all the weights? The only reason I say that is because a lot of our members that go up there, I used to work out there, is... The only reason I say that is because a lot of our members that go up there, I used to work out there, is they'll use the free weights, but then they'll also use the machines and they'll alternate, and they'll use the machine weights, not the cardio. So have you thought about moving the cardio downstairs? Some people just come to do cardio.
Correct.
Most people that lift weights, they do both. And so, and have we also discussed doing some type of survey with our current members? Because some of them may say, if it's between having more room and having the weights upstairs, just leave where they are and I'm okay with being, you know, in a tight space.
Yeah, so let me answer that in a few different ways. Yes, we did think about that. Good, good point. We like the weights downstairs because you eliminate the banging and you can keep an eye on where it's more potentially dangerous, right? People could hurt themselves, drop a bar, whatever. So that's one part of it. What we're gonna do downstairs and what you saw in the little kind of placeholder, that's not the configuration. We're working on something right now where you have free weight space, cages, but you'd also have plate-loaded machines. So you can get both experiences, right? Machines and your free weight experience. And then probably a couple of cardio pieces just to warm up downstairs. And then upstairs, you have to keep the machines, the cardio, and then more open space for perhaps functional training or stretching or abs, stuff like that. So, but, and then the next part is, would we tap into the membership base to see what they want? Absolutely. So we have circulated this through the Parks and Rec Board. They unanimously approve this. We have various subcommittees and meetings with both members, even non-members. If people want to be members, they want to go, certainly, Parks Board and then anybody on the city council that wanted to be is more than welcome as well. So we would gather sizable input, for sure.
Okay. I just wanted to really think about that. I don't want to create this and then not want to come because of the fact that they have to be going up and down the stairs.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not unique. So McKinney has a similar setup right now. City of McKinney, Apex Center. In Keller, it's a little bit similar, not totally to that degree, but there is an upstairs and downstairs. And several other facilities have that as well. I think, if I'm remembering correctly, it was Carrollton that had one area here and then went all the way over to another area. So it isn't uncommon to split that up. But yeah, we give input. And, you know, what we also need to be mindful of too is, there's a whole segment out there, the me's of the world, that don't even come, and wouldn't come because of the way it's configured and looks right now. And so how do we get that input as well?
Yeah. Yeah, because usually when, like I said, I go to a 24-hour that has two stories, but usually the bottom is a lot bigger than the top. And in this case, it's the other way around. The top is a lot bigger than the bottom. So I just want to make sure that we don't, you know, that we take into account some of those folks that, you know, go all the time, that use the weights specifically, because I don't want them to kind of see this as a disservice to them because they're having to...
Oh, absolutely. And I think, yes, we'll get their feedback, but I think they're gonna love what we're gonna put together because it's gonna be so much more space and so many new things for them to do. It's gonna give them anxiety, yeah.
Off that topic, because the dog park wasn't in here, but I would like to make a recommendation that we consider adding cameras to the dog park, whether they're placed on top of the building, looking at the park and the concession area. I feel like we need to have some type of monitoring or release video backup of what goes on over there.
And we did have an incident last weekend.
Yeah, for a car.
Yes.
So they have one of the party lot too.
Yeah.
Think this, but certainly at the...
Yeah. We're putting signs right now, sort of lock, whatever, but cameras would be helpful as well.
Is this your whole presentation?
That's it.
Okay, so...
Or... That's for the rec center anyway.
Yeah, you know, remember the Parks Board, about a year and a half ago, something like that. And I kind of challenged them, they were, rethink the parks. I mean, you're a part of that discussion.
We have a... Oh, I have a...
Yeah, we have another discussion.
I have a playground presentation after this.
That's what he asked me to do.
Yeah, he's done with the...
All right, all right, done with that, okay. Let me ask one question about this. Is that, have you thought, big enough? Is it, you know, because it's easy to go in and say, well, this is what I got, so let me live with a wall here and move the wall there, and you come up with a suboptimal plan that maybe people like, maybe they won't. And rather than saying, what if we looked at the whole facility, what if we were gonna do this today, not 16 years ago? What would we do now?
You mean like convert one of the gyms?
Yeah.
Yeah. That would actually, to me, that was my first thought on the whole thing. When we originally talked with staff, there was a little bit of heartburn that we may not have the right set for that. On second look, it came to me last week and they said, hey, that, we can actually make this work and we can put this here and kind of do things. So I think that's probably the best thing, because it's at the front entrance, it's got real high ceilings, it's got way more space. Again, that's a little bit more money.
Well, here's what I think though. This city loves parks. They love parks. And we put that up for a referendum in November. I bet they overwhelmingly approved a complete renovation of the rec center. I don't know, maybe I'm off-base here, but the, you know, so, you know, do we live with for the next 16 years the, yeah, this is the best we could get with, you know, kind of doing it within what we have? Or do we think big and say, let's convert this whole thing and let's start pulling people out of Planet Fitness and LA Fitness and wherever the people go, come into Farmer's Branch and use their...
And perhaps maybe the way to start is with some of the focus groups and get them two options to see.
Potentially, you could, you could take a few of the downstairs meeting rooms, open them up to put all the equipment in one place and move the meeting rooms upstairs?
Yeah, that's an option too, yeah, because we use it heavily for summer project. Yeah, there's a...
I just throw that out.
It could go.
If you're gonna do something, let's at least consider what are we really wanting, you know? And not always say, yeah, this is what we got and we're gonna save money here and compensate.
You don't, you don't think that the same ad library users consider that we should just keep it as is? Wouldn't be the same vocal majority coming out and saying, this building's even newer. Just keep it as is, because I don't come here, I don't use it, but it's great.
Yeah, I don't know. I hope so, man.
I think a lot of it's the library though, had to do with the history and the architecture and the way the location is. I think this being a newer building and because of our changing demographics, we're getting a lot of younger families with kids, I think it'd be more, I think they'd be more amenable to something like that. But I mean, it would kind of take care of some of the...
Remember who votes. They're not necessarily just the excited voters yet.
That's true.
They're there, and they're there in a lot more quantity than the seniors, but they're not the totally excited voter yet.
Well, if we do, if we do that, like a bond, then that'd be completely different. The golden population that uses it probably wouldn't, if you want to...
And maybe something to keep in mind is, if you said, hey, we're comfortable with the 400 this current budget year, and then, so $800,000, go after that grant. If you get that, let's circle back with 1.55 million dollars. We might be able to talk about something without really having to impact anybody. Something like that.
That's good.
So I'm thinking about what John just said and I think it might be a good idea to investigate what the possibility might sound like to taxpayers if you had maybe a couple of town hall meetings to discuss, float an idea out there. But I would only do it, like, if you don't get the grant, then, then we look at maybe doing something different. But if you get the grant money, I think what you presented sounds, what I'm trying to envision, sounds really nice. And I think it makes sense. But you just gotta sell the folks, if you're gonna have a bonfire, you gotta sell what's, what is the benefit to them? And there's a lot of benefits to using the rec center. And we see a lot of traffic there. I think it's totally different from the library. And so I don't think it would be viewed as a negative, just my opinion. And I, and that's what I agree. I think it would be really an opportunity to make it bigger, different. I don't know how much more we could expand physically.
Yeah. And I don't think it needs to be, it's just using space. There's a lot of space. It's just broken up. Yeah. And one thing to note too, we started using a software system called Listen360 that measures net promoter scores at all of our facilities. So in real time, we can see how happy people are with the range connection or Aquatic Center. And the rec center is at 85%, which is insane. So some of the best companies in the world, in the world are about 70, 75. Now, small sample size admittedly, because people have been using it several months, but Aquatic Center's at 95. So, I mean, several hundred people are telling us, this is worthwhile. So something to think about too.
Can we take a short commercial break?
Floor's yours again.
So now we're on the... Councilman Norwood, about a year ago, had asked on the dog park tour when we were looking for sites, do you have enough money to replace current playground inventory? And I know this has been a long time coming, but I hopefully have the information and some food for thought for you by the end. So we went through and our team did an analysis of what we currently have in inventory and put together a capital replacement plan that spans 12 years. So every piece of playground equipment, as it currently is today, we said, hey, what does it look like in today's dollars? What would we need to do? 13 parks with playgrounds, and again, the 12-year plan was in place. So what we found out, we replaced everything in today's money with a contractor install, giving you $257,111 annually into a CPG fund that we can pull from to replace as these come off. Now you say, well, that's a lot more than $50,000. How did we get there? Well, a few things. We used to have more money several years back, from what I understand. We did a lot of installations in-house, which we certainly can do and will do moving forward as time allows. But again, we talked about the expanding community. We're adding the dog park, we're adding medians, we're adding all of this other stuff that's requiring time. That may not be a possibility, so if we want to go high-end, if this was professionally installed, that's where a lot of your cost is gonna come in, especially for the big parks too. So I wanted to give some kind of food for thought because, again, we talked about the last presentation. When we make a decision, what's the data behind it? What's the intent behind it? What are we trying to do? So maybe there's an alternate approach here. So as we have an increase in population, a shift in demographics, what do we want our community to be? And you folks have had a ton of that kind of conversation going on, but we're a city in a park, right? We have beautiful parks. We have some beautiful playgrounds, but some are very nondescript, some are very basic. Where do we need to devote the money to? What could this look like if we introduced signature parks? A real whiz-bang park that everybody talks about, right? What is that? And if these were desired, where would they be located? And are there currently parks that aren't being used and maybe we need to look at repurposing? We've done that with the dog park as well. So the analysis, we started out with GIS and they've been super helpful in so many things that we've done here over the last year and a half. But they analyze the different neighborhoods and typically children 12 and under within a half mile of a playground is kind of what you're looking for. Councilman Blackson, I know you and I both have kids that are kind of in that 10, 11-year-old age range. It's hard to get them to do anything other than a finger workout on video games. So, but I think there are some solutions to that problem as well. We did onsite surveys as well that we conducted during optimal weather conditions to measure actual usage. So numbers can say one thing, but what are people actually telling us when they're out there? And other factors we need to consider, nearby sporting events, Farmer's Branch Park would be a good one, comes to mind. Drop an adjacent facility, perhaps a school across the street from Farmer's Branch Park when we analyze the data. And so this is what your map looks like of our parkland in green. The pins show each park and then the corresponding park to the left. You have the kids in quarter-mile, third-mile, half-mile radiuses. This is where we typically know people come from to go to a park, if they're gonna be walking to a park. And so it's hard to see there. You may have it on your iPad. Certainly send you a copy of this if you need it. But there's a few, if we just go by the direct numbers, you say, oh goodness, we should probably look at Braheide. That's a good one, beautiful park. Farmer's Branch Park, that's kind of obvious. Dutch Village, Don Schumann, certainly, let's exclude Gussy Field. That's only about 790 people. Probably see where I'm going with this. So here's our usage that came through. And what we did, we segmented out four-hour time blocks on a weekday and weekend for all parks and had people just count usage of playground equipment. So this is the average daily usage in a four-hour time period that you're seeing. So there's a couple that really jump out to me here. Farmer's Branch Park, 178 per four-hour time block. Gussy Field, 96. Now, a few reasons for what I think is why people are at Gussy. If you've been there, it's right next to City Hall and it's a beautiful park. You have Ample Shade, you have a beautiful creek next door. And that is probably the closest thing we have to a signature park with a lot of playground equipment in place. And so it's a beautiful place. It has parking, so you see people driving up, dropping their kids off, and that's one of our highest-use parks. Farmer's Branch Parks, conversely, the playground equipment is very nondescript. It's very basic. There's not much there. It's our highest usage because you have brother and sister playing a sporting event, right? The younger brother or sister is probably out playing on the equipment. You have a school next door, you have other things bringing them in, and you have a large neighborhood of kids around that. So that's another one that I think we should probably focus on if we're gonna do signature parks in the area. Now, if you're interested in two, I would say, these are the two we focus on. Gussy Field doesn't need to be done at this point, because some of the stuff's brand-new, but just again, an eye towards the future if we're gonna go this route and start depositing money. But those are the two that I'd say. Here's Farmer's Branch Park currently, basic, off-the-shelf playground equipment, swing set. But it's right in a great hotbed for people to use. What could it look like? A theme park, perhaps. And so is this the route we go at some point with a theme park? It kind of has, and doesn't have to be this, it could be anything, but something a little bit more engaging, kind of interesting, I think. Gussy Field, so here's a couple of different pictures of that. And again, this one's not, not too bad. I mean, it's some of our newer playground equipment. You have older on the right mixed with the newer on the left. Okay, looks fun to me. So, but to your point, Councilman Norwood, why limit ourselves and why start there? I think we do, again, need to have intent behind what we do. And if we went this direction, do we really go over the top and say, when I go through Farmer's Branch, it's no more parks and the best playground equipment in the area? And various things and trends, we should probably look at if that's the case. Inclusive play features. So a lot of our playgrounds now are used by most people. But again, there's no ramp to get up most of our slides. If you're in a wheelchair, how do you get up the slide and use it? We can't. A swing set, there's full-body swing sets that anybody can use, but again, ours strap your legs through and some people can't use them. So do we need to look at either one park specifically that caters to all of that or introducing that throughout? Playground technology. So again, the thumb workout, how do we integrate what you're doing on your thumbs into the parks? And there's various mechanisms and companies out there that can help assist with that and make parks interesting, bring out that kind of pre-teen demographic and beyond. Musical features, ones that you can play, or do you pipe in music? If you've ever been to Disneyland, some of the lure to it, for me anyway, is you walk up, beautiful landscaping, you hear music. It gets you kind of in the mood right away, right? Adult fitness equipment. I don't know that I'd recommend a specific adult park unless it was heavily populated with that other than kids. But what about a park that's really interesting for kids with adult equipment surrounding it so you can watch the kids as they play? And then water features. I know we've circulated splash pads before. Do we introduce that? Or do we do something kind of along a river with some lit lights you can see in there? Upgraded surfacing. Fibar, we typically use now, which is essentially mulch, right? And there's benefits to that. It's a lot cheaper. But a lot of the nicer, newer playgrounds have this kind of rubberized surface that they have. It's a bit more expensive. There is maintenance. But there are pros and cons. You don't have to sweep the firewater in every other day, right, and refill it for a couple thousand pop. So do we invest in real, real high-quality areas? And then theme parks. I showed you what one could look like, but I think we could even dream bigger on some of that stuff. And evening usage. So this is a picture in the background that I had Bradley create, our marketing guy. And John had sent me an article that talked about night parks in other countries and why they're useful, whether it's culture, kind of something that they do there. But there are several in the United States that have utilized this. You find them in New York, one in Virginia. Real neat, where you light up the slides, you can do zip line, you can do a swing set, you can do it around, all sorts of things. Sun's an option too. We had to talk to a police department and said, does this cause you heartburn? Are people gonna do nefarious activities there? Because it could, but nothing that I would have opposed. He said, we can work through anything. I think it's a great idea. So there's that. But something to think about too, because how neat would it be if we were the first ones to have a real sweet lit park that encourages people? It's hot as blazes out here this time of year. In the evening time, you can cool off, enjoy the summer when your kids can be up a little bit later. So some things to think about. I don't have prices on all of that stuff now, but I just wanted to get the juices flowing because if this is a direction we go someday, I really don't want to come and ask for $2 million. I want to come and ask for a couple hundred thousand ongoing and then plan for the next 10 years out. Did that answer your question of what you want to see with playgrounds?
Yeah, it does, you know, but... The question I asked was really included utilization. So you've got utilization date on there. So what about those ones where you had zero attendees, four attendees, those kind of things? Do those need to be completely repurposed or do we just, you know, turn them into the green space? Or something along those lines? And the follow-up to that is like, you didn't mention anything... And the follow-up to that is like, you didn't mention anything about Rahide with all that circuit equipment. That circuit equipment was really popular, what, back in the 80s? And I'm not sure how many people actually... I've seen maybe three or four people driving by there that are, they're using that stuff, but there's more modern outdoor fitness equipment that might attract younger families or younger, you know, fitness people to go out there and do exercises out there.
Yeah, that's absolutely an option. See, one of the things, I would like to gather more data if we're going to close a park and do it for several ones, and maybe several different occurrences, and see, is it truly zero? Is that just a couple of bad days that we caught up?
Sure.
And do that. I think if we're going to go the circuit training like you're saying, maybe tap into the rec center crowd, because they're the ones that work out, and say, "Hey, who has kids?" And we can pull the information, we can say, "Who falls between this and this, and who has a family?" And bring them in on the conversation before making a decision, and say, "If we put this out here, would you come?" And see if that's an option. I know there's some real slick workout configurations for adults, and there's some sort of matching brand things that you can get for that. So that's an option, if that's desired by you folks in the community, we can look into that as well. You were talking about taking it out, about putting it in, right?
Yeah, it's time to... The circuit equipment, I don't think is really used very much anymore, but there's some things like, you know, they're almost like multi-gym kinds of equipment that stay outside, and you can use, and that might be more attractive, you know, to replace it with that. And then, you know, some of these ones that are underutilized, maybe we close them. You know, I'm speaking heresy here, but maybe we close them or relocate that to like the Holiday Park, right? We found the fire station there, and we talked about putting some trails out there, but maybe, you know, we close Squire because it's not really used, even though we put $50,000 equipment in two years ago. And, you know, focus that effort on Holiday Park, or relocate the equipment, or something like that.
And maybe there's a happy medium in there. So Pam and I were discussing, you know, kids need to get back to nature a little bit, and there's ways that you can make nature interesting. So you can do logs where they climb up or whatever, and pails that they sort of, you know, put bark in and sort of...
Oh yeah, my granddaughter would do that all day.
Okay, so see, and that would be something far less expensive than what you've seen here, is replacing kind of your off-the-shelf $50,000 pieces of equipment. We could do something like that in-house, very cheap, and it's still maintaining the integrity of the park, but it's not having investment for low usage. And again, does that, that particular theme or model draw people from the outside and make it maybe more usable?
Bronson was next.
And then you, Terry. Okay, so two things about Rahide Park. I drive by it quite often, there's people using it all the time. It's just weird time of the day, and it may be onesies and twosies here and there. Now, when I was in Germany, they had said they had just replaced their outdoor equipment for more of that kind of strength training tube. They had these like, literally, they were like fitness bikes that were like stainless steel bike. They got on there and they just pedal, and you kind of do the arms back and forth, kind of like the 1980s bike. They had those, and then they had like multiple treadmills that were... It was just a repetitive motion machine where you would run on it, and your running would run the belt on it, and it was in a park. I think I have pictures of it, I'll have to look. It was really pretty cool. The other thing I think that we're missing with parks and kids, and I have kids and whatnot, is, you know, there's this augmented reality that's here, and it's not going anywhere. And it's the idea of back when, you know, a couple of years ago, Pokemon was huge, and people would walk around with their darn phones, and they'd come over to the historical park looking for these Pokemon creatures and whatnot. And I think we need to start looking. There's companies out there that you don't really have to invest in a lot of stuff. They have, you know, it's more of a licensing thing, and you kind of get there in the park, and it's a geofence thing, and then you scan, scan a QR code, and you're like, "Play, get them in the park." And it's score, it's based on running around, it's based on moving. And I think we need to look into stuff like that. I think that it's here. We, you know, I've read about it, I've seen a little bit of it, and I think that that's something that we need to start kind of... You know, you talk about being on the cutting edge of, you know, getting kids out of the house and from exercising their thumbs with Fortnite to playing and, you know, with it. And I think if you, most of them have phones or iPads or whatnot, and they're going to be able to do that and, you know, track their score, and they've got four or five kids playing around with them, and then they turn around and, you know, the game's over, and they start again. I think that, you know, that's, it's there, I think the technology's there. I think we just need to think about how to incorporate that. And we're not talking about investing a lot into these, you know, different, you know, parks or whatnot. You're, they're more or less, you know, you're licensing it, and, you know, you're installing some of these, you know, and it's kind of a game you play. So I think that's something we need to kind of consider.
Terry?
I want to talk about investing a lot. And as we had considered the library, you know, we were going to turn that area into a park, the old library area into a park. And so I would just pose the question, would it not make sense to look at one of the most, one of the largest and most wide-open spaces along Rahide Creek, between Webchapel and Josie, to create something? You talked about trying to create something that's signature. You have a huge space there, it's got water, it's a great water feature, easy. There are trees, we should probably look at uplighting trees over there along the way. And there's parking, not only for the library, but this might be an opportunity to look at redoing some of that area, making a bigger park facility, possibly moving some of that equipment so you can actually create a larger parking lot without taking away from the park equipment itself. You have a larger parking lot, plus you also have on-street parking on both sides, north and south of the creek. So, and it's right in the center of the city.
So basically, you're dealing with the bond proposal?
Well, that, that element of it.
Yes.
The park element of it. And, you know, if we're going to give the library a facelift and make it more of a focal point, why not look at maybe doing something along that that would help complement it? Because many of the kids that use the park are going to be using the library, too. At least we hope they use the library.
I mean, in a different direction from that, I was going to recommend a similar but significant investment in a park that hasn't changed in my entire life, which is Farmers Branch Park. And do you upgrade the soccer fields that are being used to, you know, maybe put in turf so that the people that are playing can play it the next day after a rain, or use them more frequently? And then we can charge more money for the clubs that are actually using those fields with the equipment, upgrade the track, do some other things, and make some investment in a narrative that hasn't seen a lot of investment in a long time. And when you look at how close it is to even Rahide or some of those others, you know, I just look at a lot of the parks here, and, you know, John referred a great point when we talked about, "What is our inventory at the park?" Do we have too many tennis courts? Could a double tennis court be converted to eight pickleball courts? You know, which is a growing sport, not only amongst the elderly, but younger people are playing that as well, to where, you know, how do you create more open space? So it's not just Brookhaven, or you have to shut down the tennis court for when we open up pickleball. Sometimes like, these are dedicated areas that change the look and feel of some of these parks that have, you know, low kind of attendance. And, I mean, I was all for, you know, redoing Rahide Park. That was my favorite part of the whole bond package, was creating that signature park. Something that brings people here, that gives us a 21st-century park that our city does not have at this time. And, you know, it's going to take a significant dollar amount of something like that.
Well, the bond would buy, you know, it's narrow and it's sloped down, so I don't know how you do what you want.
There was plenty of designs that were given that shows how you use that. You just eliminate the one part where the light is. I mean, there's still functionality on both sides that can be created from that. You would eliminate the water feature that was going to be required, cut from one of them, but, you know, the different landscape architects that came and designed a lot of things of what those areas could be are still relevant right now.
I'm not saying eliminate the library. I'm saying work around it.
Clearly, we're not going to get rid of the library.
Yeah, and just, you've got the whole rest of the way to go down and just make something really long. So I think...
All I was saying is, what was put in from the bond stuff is the exact same thing you're talking about.
But that was just going to be in that one little area. Wasn't going to be a whole...
That was on both sides and down.
All the way down to the waterfall.
It was a much bigger thing. If you want to go all the way from Webchapel to Josie, you might as well triple that.
Saying it's a space.
No, I'm, like I'm saying, I'm in agreement. I'm just saying, what you're describing is, a lot of it works kind of dumb. We just have to bring it back up.
I think what we're saying is, yes, we're interested in those kinds of activities, and we probably don't know we don't know. So we're looking to you to bring us back, hey, here's a really interesting idea, or here's something that would really grab the people's attention and get the 12-year-old video game players out to think about.
So I think what would be helpful, because I could come up with something that'll lock your socks up, but it might be $10 million, right? So if we, if we establish a commitment that you folks said, "We're comfortable with X dollars per year going into a fund to create this in this timeframe", and I can work within those parameters, each of the details, that would be the best thing for the block. Do some of the emerging trends, kind of configure them, and say, "Here's what we can do now, here's what we can do in the future." Is that maybe fair to add? Because otherwise, I can design something, create it, and then you say, "Oh, that's garbage."
I like, I like that. I think that I would much rather wait and create something like a signature park than kind of just keep doing the same thing. I love what Bronson said about the technology. I mean, we met and I, you know, a lot of ideas, and one of the things is going to some parks, even in our region where they have like the app now, where you download the app, and it's a competition, and they roll out new competitions every month, and these kids are just so engaged. So I love that conversation. The other thing I spoke with, with Mike about is, a lot of our residents play soccer, but they're not able to play in our fields because, not only weather, but because of the fact that they're always reserved for our paying customers, which I get, because keeping up with the, with maintenance costs a lot of money. But looking at, like you mentioned, the, how they're being used and who's actually using the park, and maybe doing something where instead of, you know, a tennis court, it's a little bit, a little soccer indoor, because there are a lot of apartments are doing that in Dallas, where they're creating, converting the tennis courts into, into soccer courts. So for, for foot-sol, which is a new type of soccer that a lot of the younger kids and young adults are playing. The other thing I want to talk about was, you know, I think that we do need more time to collect data. After, on Monday night after our council meeting, I went to Squire Park, and there were 35 people there. There were like 15 adults, and then all of their wives and kids were playing. I think it's just depending on the time of day and what day it is. But I think getting that data over, like you've mentioned, the six-month period, I think is really important, because then we kind of see what types of people, the age ranges. I agree with Mayor Di that Farmers Branch is, is an opportunity because of just how much, how populated it is during the day. I go to church at Mary Makewaite, and I mean, in the evenings with, you said it best, all of the families, they're all using that park, because it's kind of like a multi-genre, multi-generational thing, because they're playing soccer, they're, you know, they have, they have little kids, and they, they come from really far away, too, so they're not going to go back home and come back. And the other thing is really exploring, and I know you all do a really great job of grants, like I know, I would love to have a bigger all-inclusive playground, and maybe it is Farmers Branch, but Jordan Speed has an all-inclusive, gives out all-inclusive grants, where they have these companies putting together these really neat, netted, you know, type of playground equipment that's really new, they're doing it in Europe. So I would love for us to explore that as well, and I can send all of, you probably already know this, I can send all of these to you, but really utilize some of those grants that are even local, just to our region as well. But I love the, the way you're going with this, with the phased approach with getting funding, because I do think that I would have got to wait to do something really great than to keep replacing our equipment with the same type of equipment. And a lot of these new parks are using the, like the new one in Flaco Hill, that's a Jordan Speed all-inclusive park, they're are using that rubber, that rubber surfacing. But when we polled all of the families, they much rather preferred that type of park than what was there before, which is similar to what we have.
Yeah, as opposed to making a long-term commitment for multiple parks, I think it would be great to come up with what you think is ideal location and do one. You know, I think if we go out and we do one, and we show the residents what the vision is and what it could be, and then I think it would be a lot easier to get more support down, you know, down the road. And I don't know what that right location is, you know, for that, leave that, you know, to you. I don't think it's necessarily just based totally on how many people arrive, because if we do it right, people will arrive, and I think it will, so.
So I'll keep doing more research. Is there a dollar parameter we want to work within? I'm going to solve that later, maybe.
What do you think of the dollar parameter is to do one?
So what you saw, some of the examples you saw, that's roughly the $500,000 range. But I think what we need to do is something a little bit better than that, because that's been seen before. I think there's some things that we can do, that we can incorporate a lot of developments we saw in the presentation, for a little bit more. So I, I think we could do something really spectacular. Pam, what do you say for a million?
I'm sure with a million dollars, you'd have time.
I was, I was going to recommend, you know, maybe could we look at a few like, "Hey, if this is a little bit of amount," I would say half a million, a million, and then, you know, dream big in one park. We don't have to spend the money, but it'd be nice to look at, say, this is what it could be.
And you might reach out to the Rotary and Chamber of Congresses locally? That might be something the Chamber of Commerce can get behind.
We just, we just built one in the Gussy, just Waterworth.
If you don't kill me.
And then they just built one in Kelton Park.
That was the Kelton Farmers Branch Rotary.
That's the reason we light our awards.
So we'll go ahead and do that, we'll circle that back. Any other questions on that before we move forward to everybody's favorite presentation? Okay, so the last one is the barn project at the historical park. And I know this has been a journey for several people, and Councilman Norwood, Bob Carter, thank you for your help on all of this. I think we have some alignment, and I'll give you the board's recommendation here shortly. But again, just to start with a little background. During 2019, we gave a presentation on the barn project. Direction was given to explore architectural estimates at that point. So we went out to an RFQ, got several responses back, interviewed various, actually all of them. And the subcommittee chose Corrigan Architects, which have a history of doing tons of wonderful projects, large-scale projects, subhistorical projects. Really gave a fantastic presentation and really thoughtful on where the placement would be. And so the board is unanimously recommending moving forward with that particular group, if that's the desire of council. The cost for the project, now this is, we've done estimates, we've done various things, we've done all we can without spending money at this point. Architectural services through Corrigan, if they're doing the entire project, is $361, $250. One caveat, many of these work on a percentage basis of the total project. They're, they're doing it on an hourly basis, so this is what they expect it to be. Now, to give real, real documents, what the real cost would be, we need to go through 208, 1,500 of that project, that process to get viable documents. As has been the case with several projects that have been done, we bring Gallagher in, same kind as Corrigan, to go ahead and find the best, most efficient way to do the project. Their fee is 8% of the project cost. The good part is to get to the doable document phase is a couple thousand dollars, possibly nothing, since we've done a lot of business with them. Rough estimate to complete 7,000-square-foot project today is just under $4 million. Now, again, this is based on the exact picture that we got through Sand Creek, and their best guess compared to other projects that have been done in a six-month period, similar square footage, but totally different. One's a school, one's a barn, totally different. But this is the best we could get, again, without going through the process. That includes all-in costs for design and build. Estimate likely increases project is delayed, and we know construction costs are rising. So the historical park board recommendation was to, now this has changed with the business we got, last got together on the subcommittee, they're all in favor of a Phase 1, then it's center-only. So no standalone... they're all in favor of a Phase One and center only, so no standalone museum, no anything, just the Phase One that we saw originally is what they're recommending moving forward with. We think that's ample amount of open space to go ahead and display artifacts on rolling exhibits we can build in-house and roll out to storage, as is in proven need for a museum down the road perhaps. Hire Corrigan and Gallagher simultaneously, using hotel occupancy tax funds to obtain biddable documents. So there is money in reserves to cover that, if that's the direction you wish to go. Determine ability to proceed once architectural expense figures are determined. So we're not on the hook for anything, but if we go through this and we say, holy smokes, four million is too much, we gotta table this. At least we have biddable documents for a future project. However, we don't want to make a habit of doing this in the city bidding projects not going through, so something that you can mind as well. So direction at this point, we only have a couple options. Proceed with the board's recommendation to get an architect under contract, get biddable documents, so we have real costs moving forward, or delay the project indefinitely. So that's where we're at right now, and all of that to discuss.
A quick question, is Corrigan's estimate, was that civil and architecture or just the architecture?
I'll have to look back at my, but I can get your copy, if I have it in my bag back there, but I'll get it to you.
Okay, I mean, if that's architecture, that's a ridiculous number.
It's ridiculous either way, it's simple in both, you're talking twenty percent.
Yeah, it's, I mean, that number is outrageous.
That was a negotiated number.
Yeah, we did ask them to adjust and give another, that's the last, and that's what they did with us, so.
Then I think when, you know, some conversations around Three Nations potentially moving to the station area, doing a ten-thousand-square-foot building with a mezzanine event center and the whole thing, you know, the construction cost for that came out around one-point-six million dollars for a metal structure. And so when I see a four-million-dollar number, I'm just kind of like, where are we getting these numbers from? And so understanding some of this, I've reached out to a few architects that are different than the ones that were sent this, who I believe could probably do the architecture and everything for a lot less money. Trying to meet with them to see if they had their bid. Sent them the RFQ, just so they had the parameters, and then also a few construction companies that bid on the Three Nations deal as well to say, hey, what would this look like? Because, you know, Mark had the great idea of, hey, it's a barn, since we're not going to get a barn from somewhere else, why don't we build a metal structure and then just put, you know, wood around it to add the appearance of a barn and that functionality? And so I think there's some creative ways to get there, but hopefully we cut this number down by well over a million dollars and have something that is actually worth talking about. Because if I look at these numbers, I mean, I'm an automatic no.
Whoa, 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 you say cut it a little bit? You need to cut it in half, that's four million dollars.
I'm saying we can cut it by quite a bit. Possibly, if Three Nations built it at ten-thousand square feet, it was one-point-six million. You know, there's going to be more upgrades, there's going to be more officers, it's going to be a little bit high finish out, so it's going to go up. But then you have to add the additional cost in there, and, you know, I still, at eight percent for Gallagher, just blows my mind.
How can we get from, if my memory serves me correctly, the building, the first trip we took up north there past Devon, that building was about four-thousand square feet, right?
No. Chamber of the exact square feet, I think that was a little bit larger, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, but we decided on our trip, other trip, we needed like seven thousand or something.
I don't recall the seven-thousand conversation, but she did it for less than a million dollars.
Yeah, the original conversation started out, I think, ten-thousand-square-foot building, and when we added elements that we wanted to add to it and whatever, it parted down to seven thousand, I think.
Individuals. I must have said maybe, that must have been when I was out of town. Mayor? I was at San Antonio, but San Antonio, we didn't.
Terry?
All right, so I'm looking at the business plan that the group put together way back when. And in this, architectural site plan services, fifteen thousand dollars. Architect, engineer, construction management is estimated two-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars. Survey, seventy-five hundred dollars, and then the rest were building costs. This came to two-point-seven when they did it. That didn't include any of the additional items that we'll have to buy, AV, audio, tables, chairs, all that sort of stuff that we would need to invest in. And so I, you know, what you just said is not too far from what this number was, and I'm not faulting you. So if you all are thinking this, that's way too much, then you should have been saying that was way too much, but this was presented. But I don't remember anybody balking at these costs then.
Mike, I'll look at the table.
So now, you know.
The investment in the chairs and tables.
Tax pay, two-ninety-two, let's see, that'd be seven, three, three-oh-seven, three-twelve, roughly three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand for all that, that's here, so.
I don't care what's in that book right now, but that number is ridiculous.
Yes, yes.
I'm just saying.
No, 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 it's a notebook.
Go ahead, Terry.
Well, but Robert just said that he thinks that these, that they can get services done for far less.
Yeah. It for lower price, yeah, I'd be interested, but.
Well, yeah.
What I'm saying, having the conversations with some groups to come back and say, here's two groups that can do this for, so looking through the bid, you know, the structural number, yeah, little high, but MEP, civil, I mean, these things look fine, but the number for the architect, two-ten, just for the design work on a building this small, just is outrageous in my opinion.
Five-hundred dollars a square foot?
Yeah, I mean, this is, I mean, Bronson knows, I mean, we do this stuff every day, I see these numbers, and that's, I know that there are other people out there that can do this for a lot less, and I understand, you know, in going through this and having talked with friends, sometimes when you're working with the city, people jack the price up because they know there's a little bit extra red tape. But our city is in every city. You know, we're a little bit easier to work with, you know, we have great staff that can get through this. And it's just working with the group to say, hey, you know, give us something reasonable. But then also on the construction side, you know, sometimes you gotta bring in a different group that specializes in small construction like this. And, you know, for me, it's just having those conversations, I mean, what do you really think you can do this for, based on the RFQ? And if the number doesn't come back far less, then I don't think we have anything to talk about. Because no one's, no one at this table is going to spend four million dollars on this barn. I mean, sorry, this barn, Danny.
Is there a number you're looking for? Because we can rebid the project, and certainly talk to some people that you know, is there a number that's more?
We were looking for a number that worked within two years of hotel, hotel tax.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, I'm a big supporter of a barn. I've been from the beginning, was invested almost two years working with the Historical Park Subcommittee to try to shepherd this thing along. And I was all in at two-point-five to three. At four to four-point-five, I'm back to where we were when we got elected, we tabled the whole thing and said we weren't going to discuss it. So, you know, I'm with you, Robert, we've got to get these costs down, got to get it reasonable, and find a way to make this thing work, because I want to make it work, I really do, but I can't see making it work.
So what fits inside of the hot tax as a debt service?
Well, the problem, that's an option. The deal with debt services.
Oh, you weren't going to do debt service? We got the job.
We were going to have a page go.
Oh, page go, a couple of years, oh, okay. See, I missed the whole, this whole thing, because I just had the debt.
Yeah, you weren't there.
Because right now you have, so correct me if I'm wrong, but you're roughly one-point-four, one-point-five million dollars in fund balance in the hotel.
Yeah.
Roughly?
Roughly.
And so.
That's what we're projecting to come down this year.
I said we'd double that.
Yeah, so if you use that and maybe supplement it with either general fund balance or, you know.
So is it?
Then you could, you know, if you're talking two, two and a half, that's easy to do with the money we got now.
Okay, so we could build it for two million bucks?
Find shit out.
We gotta get the right groups in that can figure out how to do it for that, but it's something we have now, I mean, this is out of question. And I think people here are still interested in it, at the right price. So I think, I think it's just going to take more conversations, more vetting, and going out to different groups to say, hey, I mean, it's seven thousand, it's a barn, we're not building a Class A office. Even in Class A offices, that's still ridiculous.
So my question is, is in trying to make sure that, I don't want to say the public's on board with it, but from a sentiment of, when we talk about spending two or two-point-four, probably many dollars to build this, it's not like that money can be turned around and returned to them in a tax rate decrease or returned to them in the way of this, because that's very specific dollars that have to be used, is that, is that correct statement?
The hot money is very, very.
At least the hot money portion, which depending on, if you're talking five versus two, two and a half, then the hot money would be the biggest proportion, but depending on how much general fund money or general fund balance you use to supplement, that that could be, you can make the argument from a taxpayer standpoint, that we really want to do that, so just.
But in the idea that it's not like we can take that hot money and put it somewhere else, it's got to be used to bring people here to the city. So it's, okay, I just want to make sure that the hoteliers are on board with this concept. They like the idea a lot. They do?
Yeah.
That's definitely something that's going to bring folks into town for whatever event, whether it's a wedding or a convention or whatever. It's a unique space that they know, they could look, they could use as part of their sales portfolio, I would say. There's a unique off-site venue. What do the Bluegrass folks say about it? Is it something that could augment and make that festival a stronger, a larger, a better festival?
You could use that as a VIP, kind of an entertainment area for sponsors.
Yeah, the producer.
So they make it better, right?
Yeah.
He can do other things there and have, you know, smaller meet and greets.
You know that biscuit festival they got pitched to us in the arts, we could do the biscuit festival there, right? We could easily host a biscuit festival.
The one that all the other towns canceled, we won't do anymore, right?
How have the Cabanas been doing at the outdoor events and stuff like that? I mean, people are renting them out, we look at this being an even bigger VIP venue for people to use.
And that was the thought, you know, Fourth of July, it would overlook the fireworks as they're going off. You see the stage here that it would overlook, and we've had several events since we've got this new team in the Historical Park in the last couple of years, have just really done fantastic events, and everything's selling out. Maybe not everything, but a lot of things are selling out because we don't have space indoors. And so that's going to kind of help offset a lot of that as well, continue to grow what we're doing, if that's the case.
So what do we do?
I think we just keep pushing, and we gotta.
So let's just say it takes another year to do this, what's the hot tax going to accrue by then? At least three years.
Yeah.
We, it's a little more than three million in this year's, in this upcoming year's budget and two-nine out, you know, so we can adjust some of it.
So it's not, it's not a quid a whole lot, the revenues are pretty much close to expenditures for the days.
Pretty much.
And you give the park two-hundred thousand a year?
Do what?
You give the park three-hundred thousand.
The park three-hundred thousand.
Historical Park only get three-hundred thousand to about twenty-five.
Oh, you're talking about for bags for free from the debt service?
They had, remember when we were talking originally, you said you got three-hundred thousand, you can put it towards operations now, or you can use it towards debt service, but that's all you get.
But over time, what's happened is that we, that council's budgeted into that three-hundred thousand.
Have we used that money? Because I thought we promised them that, and it was just kind of accruing.
Not till the end of time.
Until something was done, neither we.
We have the ability to, we have the ability to come by a thread, but the thought behind that was that could be used for debt service. If we use all of that, the fund balance, then the three-hundred thousand is gone.
The midpoint.
It's a midpoint, that's the accumulation of that three-hundred thousand, that actually, that is where a lot of the fund balance came from, is it just rolled into fund balance because it was never used.
Okay, so that money is where that money came from, that makes sense now.
Yeah, correct.
But you could keep accruing money, and you say you get accrued to a point where you got three million dollars in the fund, and then you're just going to pay cash for whatever the right project is, or whatever the right cost is.
I mean, it would be at least a year out before we even start construction on something like this, so I mean, there's time.
Another three hundred.
I think we just go back, refine, and reach out to some new groups, have some more conversations, and dial this number back down. I mean, especially if the Historical Park Board is finally fully on board with just doing Phase One. You know, that eliminates out the museum and some of the other stuff that they originally wanted in there, and does that get the number even, you know, just a little bit tighter?
Yeah, yeah, there's some things that we can do, we're going to bring on to reallocate some positions to a park construction crew. That's a three-person crew, but they could finish out some of the smaller elements in that, that would probably pinch them that money off too. So just so I'm clear, what I'm hearing is tell Corrigan, no thank you, Gallagher, start over, recent RFQ to some of the smaller groups, see what that number comes back as, circle back, if that's, let's say.
Well, are we doing the RFQ or is council going to do that on their own? Is that what, is that your direction for us to do the RFQ? I thought the concern was that if they know it's the city, they're going to boost everything up.
Well, I mean, that's, I sent the RFQ.
Who else is going to be building something at our Historical Park, though?
Say that again.
Who else will be building something at our Historical Park, though?
Well, remember, architectural services are professional services, they don't have to be bid at all.
I mean, I've reached out, like I said, to a few groups, but if you all want to reach out as well, we can come back and compare.
I'm not sure I'm clear direction.
I'm going to continue marching down the path, talking to the people I know to say, what can you build this for? And what is the design going to cost? And come back and say, here's the number I got from these two groups.
Yeah.
Do you all want to have a bigger conversation with them?
Yeah, and to kind of, we did, the groups that we worked with, they were part of this whole process, and I did proactively give them a phone call and said, hey, this number seems a little bit high than we got initially. If we got to go a different direction, what's your fee? It was all about the ten percent project of the project amount, so I don't have any other treesy shake at this point that I'm aware of, but.
And I'd like to look at what the seven-thousand-square-foot design is, because originally when we looked, I just remember walking away from that place in North Texas, and I want to say it was four-thousand square feet, right?
And it may have been, but I know, if you'll recall, the subcommittee group that we had over in our office in the Parks Department, throughout basically, we want a kitchen, we want a rice-free, food inside, all of this stuff.
They had that?
Yeah, yeah, there were conference room they didn't have that they wanted in this part of the product, so that's in there too. I'd have to look, but I can say, I can say that stuff, yeah.
Yeah, and I think it got driven to, you know, Terry provided some data on tables and the spacing that he needed based on his experience with the events, and that increased it so much so that we could get appropriate, I think we're trying to get, see, one-hundred-and-fifty, or is it?
I think the design has two-hundred.
Two-hundred people, so it was like in that range, and that drove it to a seven-thousand. You know, we're never going to get it any bigger, we can build it smaller, but you know, then when we need the extra space. That was driven on the average wedding, right? The average wedding, one-hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred people.
There's obstructed views, at least four places. So that adds a little bit.
We went on that one, the Texas Timbers thing, so we didn't have the intervening. So I thought this was going to be so much easier, you know, I did. I thought we were going to buy all those kits and build the two things.
The kit was the cheapest part, you just had to do.
I know, you just had to have it, have a hire guy to put it together, but now it's really complicated.
And do your roof, cover the roof, you know, you gotta do, I mean, just basically buy a shell, you gotta do everything else.
Find the supplies, I guess, that was my initial thought was, it's in a kit, you just put it together. It's already supposedly architecturally sound, and what I found out is no. And when we called the folks, they said, no, this is not, there's no architecture engineering stamp on this. It's just we give you the supplies, then you're in charge of, you know, complying with architectural standards, engineering standards, and that's where the costs really start ratcheting.
We buy the kit.
I don't know why we just don't drive out four hours west and find Farmer Tom, just say, you recreate what you built here on here.
We do that.
Here's a million dollars, sure, you got this, don't forget about us.
He's just gonna be able to install sprinklers.
Yeah.
So, so I guess-
The direction is, like I said, I'm gonna have some quick conversations, I'll come back within a month with numbers and, at least proposals from those groups.
Yeah, we're still moving forward, we're not tailing this thing, but we need to really get the cost down, so.
I mean, I mean, the, the idea is, the tension, I don't think the amount of money that we would need to design this from whatever we bring back is what we've shown in the budget, uh, but the bright side is, is we probably have another year to accrue some funds to go towards the construction this time.
In the meantime, I'll get you those drawings, and we can talk, I'll get a word from council, so tell Morgan, thanks for no things.
Yeah, I said three hundred, I said it three hundred.
Yeah, okay, all right, any other questions? Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
That's all for today. Does anyone have any comments or things that they wanna go over before we recess? Anything that they feel they didn't get to, uh, talk about during any of the other segments?
Can you, can you just talk about the rest of the day for tomorrow, and how, you know?
What, tomorrow?
Run a show. They're running a show for tomorrow?
Oh, I hear you, just sit, just sit.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no.
I was gonna say tomorrow, economic development, and then, uh, sustainability, and Shane will be able to talk about some more of the landfill questions and stuff that we had that Mark wasn't able to answer, and then at twelve is lunch, but in between twelve and three, you know, checkout, I mean, I think we have the room the rest of the day, but that's when, you know, let's kinda wrap up the conversation or anymore.
Well, I kinda put this thing on, uh, you know, trying to get together these projects that are hanging out there to talk about.
I've been making a list.
Okay, so that, that's, that needs to happen sometime, and I think it'd be good discussion that we can, we've got this fund balance thing hanging out here, and everybody's got a different idea, and we need to really kinda hone, hone that down.
Sure, and we probably won't need three hours for ED and green dishes.
Okay, good, cause I, I have to leave at, that's why I wanted to, we were to ask to leave at twelve thirty, and so I definitely wanna be here for the discussion, and so that's why I kinda wanted to see what our game time was for tomorrow. I do wanna make sure to be here for, especially for what you mentioned, which I think is great, looking at what our priorities are and obligations.
And in terms, I mean, at, at your discretion, I mean, those, some of the things that are outstanding, big, big things, you could put those at nine, and I mean, that kind of building green dishes could be moved later, if you want, I mean, this is just- Recommended?
I think, I think economic development is definitely a conversation as part of our, some of those big items would be under economic development. Um, so I think if you don't think it's gonna take the whole three hours, I think I'm fine with, with just moving forward the way it is. I just wanna make note that I do have to leave at twelve thirty, so, but I do wanna be a part of that conversation.
Do we wanna start that conversation now? I mean, we got an hour now, or, so, we, we can start that conversation now.
On the, the items that we put you inside?
Yeah.
Okay, like barns.
You know, in, in terms of, have a, you know, maybe such a preliminary conversation that we could get there to start thinking about how, how we wanna, you know, narrow it down, did, did, did you have a thought on?
Then we can just make, go ahead and make a list, whatever's on the list, I mean, we take, what we put on there is what we-
Sure, the, the whole issue about the stormwater, and, and do we want to, you know, use fund balance to kinda jumpstart and get more stuff done faster?
Right.
Uh, y'all mentioned that, to talk about perhaps change in the, on a go-forward basis, or even for this year's budget to, to look at the benchmark cities we use for police and fire, uh, or, actually, those benchmark cities we use for the comp study for all employees, and do we want to reevaluate?
That's what we can do now.
Should we throw out, and then the issue about the rec center and then parks funding, those were, that's last, that's the things to talk at the end, or now?
Yeah, I think the barn was on there, but I think we've got good direction on the barns.
Okay. So do you wanna talk about the, uh, what?
Here's my recommendation, I think we should talk about police and fire, cause it's fresh, and this whole, the, the idea of the pure cities and, and how we do that compensation, five percent above median, who we choose.
Sure, so, I mean, and I'll just kinda recap what, what we talked about at lunch, is that, uh, you know, that's, that, there's nothing magical about the benchmark city list, uh, other than, you know, we do, um, you know, we have had at least one officer that has left us in Plano, um, but, uh, does, does, do those have to be comparative cities? Or, and benchmark cities, or do we just face, in the case of, of Plano, and, and one thing that, that I learned in talking to Plano city manager, is that they also do a comparative, a comparative deal, but all those small cities, including us, we're not who they look at as comparative, comparative cities, they look at, their, their plan is five percent above the median of who they consider, and their, what they, is Washington state, Chicago, Miami, they look at big cities, that's who they look at, is, who they compete with, and so, uh, they're going to be high, and, uh, and so trying to go after them is kinda like spinning a wheel. So a thought is, are, are Frisco, McKinney, Plano, are they, are they truly, uh, cities that should be, continue to be in our benchmark survey?
I said no.
Should we, should we kick them out? Should we keep them in, but kick out the high and the low and reestablish the average? You know, that's just something to think about, cause what I'm seeing here is, is we're, for, for the, you know, SB two is going to impact all of us, uh, but Plano has a huge amount of reconstruction that is going, that's kinda, it's kinda the it city right now in Texas. Uh, and, and are, are we always going to be, is it sustainable to say that we can chase Plano and the Friscos and the McKinneys of the world? Cause I think they're, what they've got going on in their world is very different than ours, uh, so, anyway, I throw that out on the table as, we need to reevaluate who we're using as benchmarks.
I mean, I thought I remember, I know it was before my time, but the conversation that we would include Plano in those cities in the study was kind of, I guess, a spoken or unspoken thing of the police officers and firefighters about how we're actually doing.
But they're not a pure city.
I, I know that.
In no way, shape, or form.
I'm just, I'm going back to the original conversation from the last study that was done, it's a five-year study.
I think we should like do Ashford, North Carolina, and Grover City, Kentucky, places that are like Farmer's Branch, have the same budget, the same amount of people, and, and make it real, cause right now, I don't feel like it's real, I think we're chasing our tail, we're never gonna get there, cause we'll never be able to spend what Plano can spend, but we are spending what Plano spends because we're chasing them. And if you saw the chart, which I wish we could put back up there, it, it really put kinda credence into, we're out of, I think we're out of alignment, and I'm not saying that I wouldn't give it to them, I would continue to do it forever, but now SB two is screwed the pooch on that one.
Well, what would the chief say about that? Because I thought part of the, that group meeting, pure city, was that's who, that's who the competition was for officers. The, the, some, the-
But Plano lost one in Plano.
But Plano just, just made it very clear, they said, no one in North Texas is their pure city.
Yeah.
You know?
But if you threw Plano out, I think that'd be valid.
And, and Frisco doesn't have their, their dark tax, so they- Yeah, they're not a pure city. Economic development that's going on, they move more money around than we can.
Sure, but I, I think the, if the concern was, we're, we're gonna be less competitive in this market, and that's, Frisco is in our market. If we're gonna lose, regardless of whether they have a dark tax or not, are, are we gonna start losing officers applying? You know, the chief was saying you have to have a hundred applicants to get one candidate, or if you don't have a hundred applicants for positions anymore, because, well, we're gonna find Frisco and McKinney and some of these others, it's just, just the thought.
Like Mike always says, we got a lot of intangibles, so, you know, this is a, a city that's a very low crime rate.
Correct.
You know, it's got a high civilian populace, supports, it's what, what it's doing, uh, so I think it's, we've got a good work environment, and if we keep benchmarking against Plano, this model's unsustainable almost already. You know, and, and I can foresee that when Plano does their budget, they, they go up ten percent. You know, and then, so next year, then we're in a thing of, well, we get a match for ten percent, and then go up another ten percent. So, I, I just don't think it's sustainable, but, so I don't know, I'm, I'm not stuck on how we do it, but I think we need to look at a, a different set of cities. So I don't know, you're thinking higher steps, throw out the high and the low, you know, then Plano would go, and what was our low, and it was Dallas, or something?
Flowerman, Fort Worth.
Fort Worth.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Maybe that would do, I mean, it certainly have an impact.
Flowerman's low on the police.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was interested, if there is a change, I would suggest to be on a go-forward basis, not in this budget.
No, yeah, not this year, not this year.
Cause this is, our, our employee base is, is aware of this, but the, uh-
Well, you could make an argument to keep it how it is through the, the next big comp study, which is in twenty-one, right?
Uh, that's true. Oh, but, but as a matter of policy, if you're gonna throw out the high and the low, the benchmark city is gonna stay the same in the comp survey.
That's true.
But that's not an unusual, uh, practice, is to throw out the high and the low, that's not unusual.
Do we know that how much that would change our answer if we did?
We, we, we can find that, we can find that out, but I just, I just, I, I guess the purpose of this discussion is, is this counseling of which to discuss that.
Yeah, I was, sorry, sorry. You, you know, when you, when you look at the, the list of people that are higher than us, it's Plano, McKinney, Irving, Capel, Arlington, and Allen are the only ones higher than us on this list of one, two.
Can you give me that list one more time?
Irving, Allen, Plano, Capel, and-
McKinney.
McKinney.
So Irving and Plano.
Irving and Allen are the highest.
Or even higher than Frisco, we haven't addressed it yet.
And so, we're assuming that this information's correct.
For starters.
Yeah. No, no, it's for the-
So, yeah.
No, it's like Irving.
Irving's in the middle.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it's not higher than us.
So they're twenty, so, we're already almost in, well, in fact, it says median is, you know, the thing that- that I'm looking at here, already shows us above median, for, for start, for starters.
Let's have one conversation, let them track the wet score.
Yeah, I don't know what we're talking about. Go ahead, bro.
Terry, Terry has a, a, a chart, I'm guessing you got it from the police?
Yeah, but everybody else should've got it too.
Yeah, I, I never did.
But see, I don't know if that chart correlates with that chart, because if you look at that chart, the only ones that are higher than us are Louisville and Plano.
Yeah.
Right?
The police association chart, the police association chart is distorted, cause they've checked based on the steps. Yeah, that's-
I'm just looking at starting salary.
If you look at start, I'm just looking at officer's starting salary, that's it.
Yeah, which is that right there.
Okay, and we're at sixty-two, seven fifty, the median for the market is sixty-two, two sixty-four.
Oh, okay, you're, you're using the existing salary, not that chart, that's, that's the proposed increase right there.
Well, okay, I, but I'm looking at what is now.
Okay.
Based on what they gave, from all the cities that, one, two, three, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty. Twenty-three cities that they compare.
Are they the same cities?
Well, there's not twenty-three cities there.
They try to use the same city, but I mean, all, all, what you're saying is, they're using the current salary, so that, that's you, that's based on the four and a half, uh,
Four and a half, four.
Yeah, so this, that's after the impact of the proposal, so, yeah, if you, if you took the red and the dark blue and moved it down, then yeah, there's gonna be more cities higher, that's why we're recommending this.
So-
I think we did. Right.
So, so based on the information given by the police, we're higher than Addison, we're, we're higher than Carrollton, Capel is higher than us, they're immediate, we're higher than Dallas, we're higher than Denton, we're higher than Flowerman, we're higher than Fort Worth, we're higher than Frisco, we're higher than Grand Prairie, we're higher than Grapevine, we're higher, no, Irving is higher than us, McKinney, Plano's higher than us, we're higher than Richardson, we're higher than Rockwell, and we're higher than Southlake. We don't have a problem today. And look at, so-
So as a manager, you could sit here and say, based on this, which is what they gave us.
Yeah.
We feel, as the managers, that the city has a, is in the right place, and if the officers don't like it, it's a free marketplace. It, it is really what you're saying, that they can go work for another department, they can go work for another TMS department, they can go leave, go do something else, whatever, but this is what the job pays starting out. Now, this will get, the whole thing will get skewed somewhat because, uh, I just read that Dallas is now offering starting pay at seventy, so.
We're, you said with forty-eight, sixty-three or something?
Yeah, the billboard I drove by the other day said sixty, so it must've been, was it recent, like this week?
I just, I saw it this past week, so, I mean, we'll double, I'll double check it, but, but if-
If, if you find that, send that around, this would be great.
Yeah, well, let's assume that it's true, okay, let's just assume, uh, because they're in a bad way. And sixty, you know, why would you work in Dallas at sixty when you, you're getting twenty-seven hundred dollars more to come here?
You can have a retirement system that's solid.
Yeah, that's right.
It's also a lot harder, harder to get higher.
I mean, if, if we're comfortable the way things are, then you say, okay, we're gonna leave it just as is. Or, or we're gonna do this.
Yeah, what, 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 what the police association is, is gonna come back and say, they're gonna say, council, you, you adopted a strategy and a policy that you're gonna pay five percent above the average of a certain benchmark city, please adhere to that policy you have.
But we haven't adopted, it was just, it was just a, there's no resolution about, there's no, nothing, this is what they-
That is the policy, philosophy.
We've been just doing what others have done in the past, is what we've been doing, as far as I know, we never passed a resolution, we never passed an ordinance that said, we're gonna keep our public safety above five percent above median.
No, you can change it anytime, you're correct.
Yeah, it's, it's guidance we gave to staff in twenty sixteen.
But it's, it's, it's published in the budget, that's, that, at, at that point in time, the philosophy until the council changes, that, that will, that will continue. So, again, can change, be changed.
Right, but for them to say that right there, I think that's completely wrong.
Yeah.
That's completely the wrong way to do it, you know, and I would've challenged their assertion that that, it may not be the way that they say, but then, that they may say that you've set a precedent by doing it, but I don't think they should throw someone off the bus saying, you have a policy that says it, because I, I don't believe that we have a policy in place that says that, we've just done that.
So, 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 so we have, we have budget pressure, right? We've got a perception out there, and, and regardless, it will create enough war, you know, the huge change. I, I think we're, I, I think we can recover a few hundred thousands, I, I'd like to make a recommendation that we make the, we, we go with the recommendation, but we make it effective April first for police and fire, uh, April first of twenty twenty. And just say, we're under budget pressure, we've got a creek issue that we're trying to, you know, and, and, you know, I think we need to look at some other areas to maybe try to drive, you know, some additional revenue. You know, I think, I think potentially, you know, we asked for two officers and two cars, you know? You know, can we get away with two officers in one car and still pull it out of the red light fund? And, you know, and, and get through that, that's another fifty, you know, those are small numbers, but if we can find four or five places where we can either A, generate more revenue, which I think we found a couple of hundred thousand dollars in revenue in,
Parks and Rec?
In, from Parks, you know, today, you know, if we can get, if we could find another million to million and a half dollars, limits what we would have to pull out of, assuming that everybody want, that, that's a consensus to do that, would have to pull out of the general fund balance. fund balance, you know, overage in the balance, and, and, and we can shrink that down, and that gives us six months to take a deep dive.
Eliminate the, eliminate the mayor.
Yeah, yeah, but, again, I, it's easy for me, I have no desire to look for another office, and, you know, but they're getting nineteen percent behind the line. You know, I, I don't know what other cities are giving behind the line on that, but, you know, there are not many companies that they, they give their employees nineteen percent behind the, I mean, social security is six and a half percent, I think is the, is employer portion of that, and even if you have a matching, I've seen some companies that match like three, up to three, four percent of their salary, but even if you did that, you're, they're still getting six percent more plus, you know. Are, are all of the police departments giving nineteen percent behind the line?
The average that, of the cities in North Texas that they're proposing is around four percent for place and fire, which would be above, it would.
No, 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 I'm talking about behind the line, you know, we're putting in a.
Retirement health care.
Oh, oh.
Our Cadillac package.
Oh, oh, I see, the TMR is what you're talking about. It depends, it depends on the city, like Carrollton, what they did is they, they lowered, like we do seventy percent of CPI for COLA for retirees, they're, Carrollton's at fifty percent, Addison, they have, we have annually recurring, that means every year you get a COLA increase, Addison, they do it by sporadic vote, so every once in a while, they'll say, I make a motion to give retirees a COLA adjustment, the problem is the longer they wait, the more expensive it is, so it's harder to do. So, when you don't, when you don't have annually recurring, or when you have a lesser COLA adjustment, that dramatically lowers your percentage contribution, so.
You said we raised ours from fourteen to nineteen.
Over, but it's been over a period of fifteen, twenty years.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been, it's been in the seventeen to nineteen range for a little while now, I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, inching up, especially when it goes to twenty percent and beyond, it starts to, it starts to be a concern, that that's a, a nice, but that, but it'd only do that if council went from twenty-five to twenty.
Yeah.
We should be, we should be able to stay at nineteen flat for quite some time.
Do any of these numbers and adjustments affect our ability to get a triple A bond rating? Whenever that, I start looking at this stuff and saying, wow, you know, like, I, I don't ever think we would get there, but all I can think of is Belle County, whenever they started just, you know, going, getting wild with the money and, you know, ended up bankrupting the city.
Yeah, and nothing we've talked about would do that, I mean, if, if y'all said, okay, Charles, you got twelve million dollars in general fund balance, anything more than a buck is too much, put all this money into a stormwater and bring us down to zero, that would definitely impact our bond rating.
Yeah.
But, you know, nothing we've talked about today would, in my eyes.
How does the rating agencies look at our rate and being at the, at the effective rate last year and having a tax rate decrease versus where we've been in the past, how does that go into the equation of a bond rating?
They look at your, what they look at is, is your residents' ability to pay, and so that's where median income becomes an important issue, and then that's where we also come in and say, well, eighty percent is commercial, and then they say, okay, well, if you're saying that you're really relying on your commercial to pay the taxes, how diversified is your commercial, and that's when we show, you know, the top ten, are they diversified, the top twenty are they diversified, or if it's all one company, you know, so we've, we've got really good dynamics, you know, we're very close for triple A, the, the big holdout was the median income, but as, 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 you know, the west side builds out, the median income is gonna skew up, so we're, we're very close, very, very close, but nothing we've talked.
You think our twenty-twenty May issuance will, will have a triple A?
Well, the unfortunate, there's a, there's a pro con there, the pro con is that Cheryl mentioned the ten million dollars, we did that on purpose, because at ten, if you only issue ten million or less in one calendar year, then it's what's called as bank qualified, that means you can go directly to a bank and sell it to a bank, because they're, they have to have so much of that kind of debt in their portfolio, and so by doing that more on a direct basis as opposed to go out to the market, you can negotiate usually about a half percent cheaper interest rate, that's why I think I may have sent y'all the, the current interest rates for bonds, it's, it's the lowest, it's been in almost forever, and so knock another half percent off that and negotiate directly with a bank, they buy all your debt, you don't have to, you don't have to go before a rating agency, you don't have to do an official statement, there's a lot of things that you save money on, but it gets roundabout way of telling you that the reason we wouldn't get a triple A is because we wouldn't be, we would have to go before the rating agencies, still could.
We still could at that.
You still could, but, but you're gonna sacrifice that, the, the cheaper bank qualified rate.
So is it like the idea of saving ten thousand dollars to get a triple A rating, or are we saving a hundred thousand, we saving a million dollars?
Well, we're actually, we've asked the financial advisor to actually run some scenarios, if we, if we issued the debt right now.
I'd like to know, because I, everyone, we're like the only people who don't have it.
Yeah, but I, I would say what the other part that I realized in talking to rating agencies, I mean, we can show all kinds of, you know, hey, this organization is estimating that our median income is going up since the last census, and they go, well, good for you, but we wanna see a census.
Yeah.
And so, so that's, the, the gold standard is gonna be the census, and that's why that's important to support the, the efforts of the area mayors and county commissioners to get a good census count and get that information.
April twenty-one is a long time from now.
Yeah, no.
Long time, yeah, a long time from now, and then they get to go back and kind of correct it what in September, kind of do their statistical error analysis, that's a long time.
We pulled out everything we could, rolling around, showed them all the construction, they were like, great, have this double A plus and enjoy yourself, it did not change.
Okay, we got two things that we were discussing that we kind of went away from. Does anybody have an objection to eliminating Plano and whoever the lowest city is on our future-going median calculation?
Okay, two things, if the police is assuming that, based on our agreement, that Plano's always gonna be included, then we're just gonna make them upset even more, if that makes any sense, and so we're trying to find a common ground and find a place where we can be excitable, they can be excitable, and the residents can be accepting of everything. So that's, I have a, I have a hard time, or, you know, Charles made the, he would have said it if it wasn't, if it wasn't something they were expecting that Plano be included, but for Plano to make the statement that there's not even a city in Texas that's our peer, I think that kind of speaks volumes that, you know, but, again, so I think we're, you know, we're kind of at the hard spot, you know, I, I don't, you know, if they're expecting it, I think we need to keep it in there, but if we take it out, you know, what do we achieve? Do we achieve giving them, or, what, what does it achieve?
Well, maybe we should eliminate Plano for this year and rerun the numbers, and then we can have an idea of what it would have meant, the difference.
With that.
That kind of thing, and then we can look at that tomorrow and see, is it even worthwhile doing? Because my, my opinion is, we're never gonna be able to compete with Plano, Plano's always gonna go up and be the top in, the top in the region, and if somebody wants to leave Farmer's Branch and go work in frickin' Plano, they can do it.
And I think.
Hold on, Mike.
Well, I am concerned that I, if, if you wanna change the ground rules, that's fine, but we made a commitment, we, it was our philosophy, after, right after I got on council, that we're gonna pay five percent of median, okay, and.
That's not changing.
Okay, no, but the number will change based on who we eliminate, so I just don't wanna go back on that because that will really, that's, that's not gonna settle over me as a, you know, manager who made a commitment to an employee group. Now, we could decide not to, you know, not to do non-sworn staff, okay, I mean, I don't know what you're, where we're gonna end up on this thing, but I'm just saying, I think for the swarm, we need to remember that that's something that we all decided to do.
We, we agreed at that time that we're gonna be five percent above median, we didn't necessarily agree on what the correct set of cities were, so that, that's, that's the only thing that I'm suggesting we need to look at changing, because as Mike, so eloquently put it earlier, this model's unsustainable and wanting.
Yeah.
And, and we've gotta come down to some kind of reasonable level that we can maintain with our office.
I'm afraid that it's unsustainable, five percent thing, Mike, I'm afraid it's unsustainable, even after we get past.
Right.
I'm not suggesting even changing that at this point.
I, I would say, I would say that there's a dynamic bigger cities have with higher populations than we have, and I don't know where you draw the line, but you could draw it at a hundred and fifty thousand residents or two hundred thousand residents, but, but if we said, you know, this is where, you know, these are our peers, you know, we talked about our peer cities, and it's just not location, it's about the size of the city and the, you know, because that generates a dynamic, and, and that would eliminate, you know, Plano for sure, McKinney, I don't know how many they have, they've gotta be above one fifty, don't you think?
If you eliminate Plano and Grapevine, I just did it right here, eliminate Plano, which was the high, Grapevine, which was the low, that makes the median sixty-one, nine, twenty-five, that puts us eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, and I'm talking present, at present, above median.
You're talking, you're talking average, not median, those are two different works.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have our HR professionals run that number if that's okay.
But again, you know, I, I think going forward in the future, you know, when we try to compete with cities that have two hundred to five, I don't know how many Plano has, but, you know, it's not fair, it's not a fair fight, right, and, you know, we should not do a death by a thousand, 'cause come back a year from now and we might look at it again, I, I think identifying who our peer cities are, you know, and it might be just the ones that touch us, right?
Yeah, other than Dallas, we've never lost anywhere to Dallas.
Yeah.
They have a whole bunch of other issues.
But from a statistical kind of analysis standpoint, the throw, the, the theory of throwing out the high and the low is, is acceptable, that's, that's an accepted practice from a lot of standpoints.
Just normal statistics.
Yeah, that's probably, exactly.
No, I'm fine going there, but, you know, I, I, I do wanna make sure we do it properly so we don't create this unrealized expectation that, hey, change all the ground rules and now we're, everybody's screwed, because that's not our intent here, but, and there's one other thing, what we're talking about that I thought.
We talked about delaying it till the.
Yeah, and then Mike brought up delaying it till April of twenty-twenty, is there a consensus on that, or do we need more discussion on that?
What does that achieve by delaying?
Well, it'll give us a.
About three hundred grand, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Running out of budget.
But it delays them getting it too, right?
Yeah, but they'll know exactly when it's coming. But.
I'm worried that to go against merit too, so it'd play across the board, all employees?
Yeah, I worry about more of a municipal or government employee counting on that every year, knowing that they're gonna get whatever the three percent, whatever it is, counting on that as part of the, what they live on or whatnot, I don't know, this is a, being in a private world, it's hard to, because we don't do that, we don't, it's not every year, it's, it's, you know, as determined, you know, when necessary, and so, you know, you, you've got a multitude of employees that probably are, have expectation of, you know, they're gonna take a cruise next year because they're gonna have this extra income, they're gonna do this this next year because they'll have this, and so, or, I don't know, I don't know what's the best, best approach.
But Bronson, and I've, I've lived this before, companies that went out of business, and there were almost fifty percent of our company's revenue, right, things happen, we've got an issue that we've had, never had before with this creek, which is creating undue stress on our budget, and sometimes you have to adjust, and, you know, speaking from experience, when you go through that, your employees understand that they're gonna have to adjust to, right?
I could say that from a private industry, but I'm not sure from how that works in the public.
Well, we would be laying off people if we had a hit like that, I would, at the radio station, we would just have to cut that.
I could like talk from the federal experience, I can tell you about the years I got negative favors, because they adjusted the whole pay scale the way and all the other categories, and so I ended up with less money. So, you know, stuff happens.
I, I get it, but I have a hard time saying that, you know, my conservatism also has a compassion side to it, so I, I try to, I try to weigh them out and balance it out, and, you know, if doing, if delaying, you know, I'm not gonna stand in front of, you know, of this idea, but, you know, if it's just, you know, what you all think is gonna work and be best.
Charles, I'm gonna put you on the spot because you're the city manager.
Well, I mean, first let me say that we, our employees are compensated well, they have a, they have a great benefit structure, they're, they're happy, they're dedicated, I believe they're very productive, now, every, every city major will probably tell you that, but I truly believe that, we've got a great team, the, there is a lot of value in having a happy, productive, motivated team. We also, when I say productive, I, I mean, not just, you know, I'm not just saying that to say it, if you look at most of our departments and compare them on a per capita basis with other cities, you'll find that, that we have fewer folks, we tend to hire folks, pay them a little bit more, and, and focus on quality, not quantity. I say that when, you know, at some point when you start altering the benefit structure, you could maybe alter that, that happiness factor for lack of a term, so then I start looking, okay, how big, you know, it's just like, you know, having fees at the senior centers to some extent, you have to look at what's, how much are you getting versus how much heartache you're causing, and so, you know, if we're, if we're talking a million dollars worth of savings that you could, I mean, to me, that's, if we're looking for money to help in a meaningful way on the stormwater side, a million dollars, you're, is, is kind of, to me, that's meaningful, something like three hundred thousand-ish, I mean, I, I don't wanna say that's a small amount of money, but in the whole scheme of things, that's, well, that, is that gonna be truly impactful on the stormwater side, I'm, I'm not sure that I can say that that would make a humongous difference compared to the employee goodwill. So that's, but, you know, like I said, staff is very happy for what they get, and I don't want to, you know, I, I don't want to, to make anyone think that, you know, I, I, I don't like hearing, you know, staff expects, staff is hoping for this so they can take their cruise they're planning on, to me, that, that makes it sound really like we have a bunch of selfish, greedy employees, and I, I truly don't.
Well, that's not, that wasn't my intention in saying that, I'm just saying that people have an expectation that they know they've gotten it for so long, it's built into their, why?
Yeah, but I, I don't, yeah, I, I, I don't think that's the way, you should reward people based, not based on their expectations, but what they prove, what they do, and how they perform, and, and I could care less about their expectations, I care about, you know, if they, if they go, if they're out there and productive and they do what council wants them to do, they should be rewarded for those efforts.
I mean, when I, I think about the conversation that was had five years ago, we set the expectation of what we were gonna base the numbers off of, and in my opinion, I think that runs out until the end of that contract, which is the next study, and at that time, we should put in place, we redefine who our peer cities are for that study, so that it is reset at that time, because if they're getting a study every five years to reset kind of what that baseline's supposed to be, even though we're making adjustments every year, you know, I think at that time for that study going forward is the appropriate time to say, we're gonna make this change, and this is why, and you have time to understand that this is happening, everyone's aware of why we're moving this way, and so the next study has different parameters around it that reset the baseline based off of those same parameters, because we're still moving and targeting everything off of a standard that's already been set and communicated to other people. because we're still moving and targeting everything off of a standard that's already been set and communicated to other people.
Yeah, it's not every five, it's every year.
We've been doing it every five, but the major study.
The major, yeah, we, the, the policy is, we have a major comp study where we have a third party come in every five. And then every year we do a mini-study, which is this, where we just call around and say, hey, what's your starting salary for police and fire? So that's how we adjust in the interim, that's part of our philosophy and policy.
That's what I'm saying, if the major study is what we should say for the next five years, this is the expectation?
I like that, but can that third party also help us define who our peers are?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
We could work on that now.
And that's, I think, what that's important, because, I mean, even, like Dallas isn't, Dallas compares themselves to Chicago and Houston and all, like, they're not neighboring cities, really. So, and I, I think, I agree with you, I think we do need to find those other cities that we compare to, and even right now, Dallas is in budget cycle, and they're, they're, they up their, the salary to sixty thousand in December, but then now they're talking about increasing public safety salary, but not starting. They're looking at the steps, because they didn't increase the steps.
I, I just remember reading some of the papers, it says seventy-three.
Yeah, no, so it's just, yeah, so it's just the steps, because they never changed, they, they increased the starting salaries, but they didn't change the.
Because they wanted to do the cheapest solution, and the cheaper, the part of the problem they were having is hiring. So they fixed the hiring problem, but then all of a sudden you have a brand new employee, make the same as a three and four-year employee, and so then you have compression, and you have dissatisfaction.
Yeah.
But to trickle that increase all the way through would be heinous, expensive for Dallas, and so they, they just, they, they cut the bleed just to fix that one problem, hiring.
But we don't have that, really.
No, because we always trickle, this always trickles through.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm just trying to wrap my head around.
We adjust it all.
Okay.
But, you know, we're, there's two things here, you look at cities you compare with from kind of a fairness standpoint, then you also look at cities you compete with. And, and to me, on the public safety side, that's the more important one, because we're, you know, with a small number of, of human resources that want to be police officers anymore, that's the truth, then you really have to look at, okay, how do we stay in, you know, in the business of being able to be competitive with other cities? And so, you know, you'd have to look on here and see where, who is, who truly are, when someone goes out and puts out an application, you know, are they, is it with us and with Arlington, and, you know, who they're looking at, and the competition, who we're losing folks to.
And I mean, that's one thing, when I get to your point on Asheville and Grover City.
That's not a lot of competition.
Well, I know, but when you want to look at peer cities of safe size and everything else, but do any of the cities sit right next to, is in the middle of the fourth largest city in the country?
Officers would never want to leave here to go there. So that's what spins it back to, our competition is Plano, even though we're never going to have an officer come from Plano to here.
Yeah, but, but part of, part of that is that the officer lives in Plano. So, or Allen, one of the, but he's close to Plano, so that was, it wasn't just go to Plano for Plano, it was because, hey, it's close to home, and by the way, they pay more. So there's sometimes a lot of le factoits here and.
Didn't we have two officers leave and come back?
Yes.
And then, and did they not go to Plano?
I don't believe it was Plano. One went to a, like a county in the middle of Texas and realized that life is different in rural Texas than it is in a larger city. But, but, you know, and our newest officer is from Alaska, newest officer is from Alaska, and how he found out about us, he had friends that lived here, and so he's moving his family down from Alaska, so.
Still sixty, out of state.
There's always a lot of different factors.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So, I mean, I mean, that's, that's just my recommendation is keep kind of the standard that we've been measuring against from the last study up to the next one. But let's start planning for that next study and understanding who our peer cities are and how we want to set that gate. So the expectation is clearly communicated, and we have an understanding of what we're trying to achieve as well. Because I think we can, you know, check off for, you know, two birds, one stone.
And so this communication or expectation was done in 2016?
Yeah, fifteen or sixteen.
Fifteen or sixteen. It was essentially a study session where council, council, you know, essentially said, you know, we talked about the policy, and council at the time said, let's adopt a policy of, essentially five percent above the average is what it, what it was.
The median of all of these specific.
Of the, of the, well, yeah, because we use these benchmark cities for quite some time.
It was also communicated that we were going to keep Plano in to where in the future Plano might not be a comparable city. So then it's eliminated from the calculation that is reconfigured going forward. And I think that's where I'm trying to communicate is what is the new baseline that we're going to set, and who are the comparable cities? I mean, whatever everyone decides to do this year, I mean, can be completely different, I just, that's, that's my opinion.
I was, I was, you know, made that choice. That's right.
We were young, we didn't know what we were going to do.
The, the one point one three one million is already in the budget currently, correct?
That's all the increases across all.
For both fire and police?
And, and cities.
Yes.
And others, okay.
And, you know, supply and demand dictates this too, I mean, Irving, they're, they're, their budget is to hire sixty more officers next year. Dallas, they're five hundred, six hundred short, so I mean, it's the, and, and really, truly, people are not wanting to be police officers anymore. So it's, it's, and so at some point, supply and demand normally would indicate you pay until you finally get the person. I would argue that a hundred thousand are a police officer, because that's the trajectory, that, that's not going to be sustainable for many cities, just one.
And we're still, I mean, today, by comparison, out of twenty-three, there's six that are higher than us. That means there's, what, sixteen below us? Right, and, and most of the ones below us are the people right around us. You know, Addison, Carrollton, Flowermount, Frisco. We're still, we're still, if you're going to look, we have a better location, and we have a better working environment than, than any of those cities.
We offer better tools, better equipment, you know, the higher end of the TMRs, retirements, I mean, there's a lot of things we can talk about here.
But that's not always relevant, obviously, it's the, end of the day, end of the day paycheck, money now is what they're more interested in than money then.
Yeah, which is the, the whole millennial generation, it's like, how much, how much money in my pocket to E C?
Well, sorry.
Okay, so we're, what we decided is to keep where it's at until this next thing, or we're going to make a change now, or?
I mean, technically, we don't have to make a decision today, we have several more meetings to discuss this and let everything that we've talked about kind of sink in.
We can think about it, we talked about it.
Does anyone have anything else? I'm assuming some people are going to want to freshen up or send some emails before.
What time is dinner?
Six.
Where at?
Fifteen.
Next to the Silver, next to the Saloon.
Oh, the one on the side of it?
Christina's.
Something on the side of the square.
Yeah, it's catty corner.
It is, okay. It's, it's two doors up from the store.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Dog啃. So, all right, well, if there's nothing else, I guess we'll just recess until tomorrow morning.